Good morning. It's Wednesday, February 19th, 2014, and we're in the Commissioner's Boardroom, 1115 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some rather interesting subjects this morning. We start with public comment. I'm going to just kind of lay out a few thoughts here. First of all, if you wish to speak under public comment, and will be your only opportunity to speak this morning, if you'd sign up, if you haven't, we'll leave a list out there till probably about 10 after, so I'd like to encourage you to do that. We've kept testimony and public comment from previous meetings, and that'll be part of the record in these deliberations we have this morning. On public comment, I'd like to limit it to about three minutes. I'm not going to be real firm on it. We have no light or anything that you might see somewhere else, but if it's gone on a bit too long, I'll ask you to sum it up and move along. Not much for interruptions, so I ask that you be courteous, and everybody will get their opportunity to speak here this morning. So Kim, if you have a list, we'll go down pretty much as they're signed up here, and our first two, and it looks like they'd like to come together, I don't know that, Bud Pierce and Dick Withnell.
Ready to go?
If you just, please, I should have said that, just give your name and address, and then go ahead and tell us what you'd like to.
Yeah, I'm Dr. Bud Pierce. I'm in 961 Glen Eden Court, Northwest Salem, Oregon, 97304. I'm a medical oncologist in Salem, and I've been practicing oncology medicine for about 20 years. I do have patients on the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program. I've found in my practice that patients that have used medical marijuana before they developed cancer and received cancer therapy, and who have had a good result, feel good on it, when they undergo cancer therapy, they seem to benefit. I've noticed that people that don't, don't, and a lot of times I'll have older patients and family members or users, and they'll say, you know, grandma, whatever, try it, and they'll try it, and I have not been impressed generally with the use in people who haven't had a previous positive experience. A weakness of the program is that, in terms of coverage and what conditions are covered, I have a form here. I'll just run down the list very quickly. Cancer, which is what I do, glaucoma, pressure in the eye, having the HIV virus, you think of Magic Johnson, healthy guy, he would qualify for medical marijuana, Alzheimer's disease, agitation, and then medical conditions, all told, that lead to poor appetite, severe pain, nausea, seizures, and muscle spasms. So we have cases in Oregon where physicians see 5,000 patients or so and write marijuana forms for them so they can get marijuana cards. So obviously, there's a great concern of, is the medicine really being used by people that truly need it, or is there some way to get a drug out into society for euphoria? In medicine, when I started practicing, narcotics were very restricted. I started medical school 37 years ago. That was probably too restrictive. We had people that had pain that should have been treated. By 2,000, the state legislature asked us to give more narcotics, and there was a mandatory eight-hour physician program, and I remember the first guy that got up basically said, "You need to give more drugs to people when they're in pain, they need to have pain medicine," period. And it was brought up that there were lawsuits when people weren't given adequate pain medicine, and that led to a lot of pain medicine going out into society. So now we have a prescription-drug abuse problem where people are on very high doses of narcotics, people give their narcotics to family members and friends, sometimes they sell them, and then children get into the supply. So again, my fear is, as we get out here with more free access, unless we're very careful on control and how we use this, we're going to follow that same pathway. Finally, you know, if you look at statistics and things, I'll just wrap it up here, the marijuana of the '60s had about 1% to 5% THC, now we're about 15%, 10%, 15%, 20%, it's much more potent. If you look at countries like People's Republic of China, we shouldn't follow them necessarily in all ways, they have a .3% lifetime prevalence rate of marijuana, ours is about 44. If you look at America, we're the world leaders in narcotics and sedatives, muscle relaxants, marijuana use, lots of drugs that affect the mind. We're at about a 60% participation rate in the workforce of our working-age people, overall about low 40%. Hard to imagine that layering more drugs on top of our society is going to lead to a more productive and moving-forward society. So I think this has to be very, very carefully monitored. There are appropriate patients for the use of medical marijuana, but the risk for misuse and inappropriate use and ruining patients' lives is high, so that's going to be in your hands, I think. Thank you.
My name is Dick Withnell, 2650 Commercial Street Southeast. I have two concerns, kind of piggybacking on what Bud said. First of all is the livability of our county. It wasn't too long ago that we were fighting methamphetamine, and myself and Anna Peterson and a number of people in this room were part of that, no meth, not in our neighborhood.
Excuse it, we still are, and thank you for initiating the effort, but we are still fighting it.
Right, okay, exactly. And the social services reflects that problem, too, with the foster care, with the at-risk kids, with the Department of Corrections, with the Oregon Youth Authority, and all of that. And the second thing is, as an employer, there's a big difference between marijuana and alcohol. And alcohol, as we've learned in the past, as we're getting more education on that, that the marijuana sticks in the system by going to the fat cells. And so if a person is using marijuana on Thursday, Friday, or what have you, he will still be affected by Monday or Tuesday, and of course, that's affecting the workplace. I think it's ironic that we're allowing the free-fall of use of alcohol, not the restricted use, but the free, excuse me, of marijuana, not the restrictive use, but the free use of marijuana, when we have all of the other worries about cigarette smoke, our park services now are considering maybe not even smoking in the park, and here we're going into the marijuana. On a personal note, I'm an alcoholic. I haven't had a drink since November of '79, so that's quite a ways ago, but the addictiveness really scares me on the marijuana, and how that'll cascade into our livability in the town, in the community, and also as being an employer.
All right, thank you. Well, I can read a lot more of these this week than last, but I'm still struggling a little bit, but Larry Rathburn, I believe.
Well, I'd like to speak on the need for dispensaries and such. I've been retired and disabled for over 20 years now. When I came back from Vietnam on my second trip, I come up with multiple sclerosis, and I had never seen marijuana until I went to Vietnam. But as I look back at Vietnam without marijuana, there'd have been a heck of a lot of people that would not have made it back. Everyone pretty much smoked marijuana or did alcohol because of the stress and such over there. Now, as back here in the states, there's a lot of people that have brought them problems back to the states. A lot of post-traumatic stress and such like that. I really feel that there's kind of a, I need to keep different people straight. I've seen several things. I worked with, in 2005, I worked with LEAP, which is Law Enforcement Against Prohibition. And I started them out seeing them off on the West Coast at the ocean, and we ended up at Statue of Liberty. Now, as I see it, without having a dispensary to go get your medication, you're really hurting. I'm very, very sad to see that I can live in Oregon and get my medication. In other states, people with same problems or worse problems, where the medical marijuana would take care of the problems. And I'm not speaking of smoking marijuana, I'm speaking of smoking vaporizing and making edibles and such that really ought to help people. And I've seen, as, I've seen a lot of experience. I could fill this room with people that have seen good results. Now, I know people that were ready to, this one, a couple, the man was ready to start putting diapers and everything else on his wife, and you see his wife today, you wouldn't believe the results. But there's only one place that she can get her marijuana, and that's through dispensaries. Now, I do feel that the dispensaries and such would cut down a lot of our black market, because when I first got my card, it was in Washington, and when I got my OK in Washington, I was sent to a dispensary, and there it was very, very expensive, over $320 an ounce. And, but that's where a guy had to get it, to get his medication. And they allowed X amount, X amount of medication to go out, and that was it, so that the people that didn't, they felt that they didn't abuse it or whatever. But I haven't seen much abuse. I was a part of the organization that was in town one time of teaching people on how to make different medications and such like that. It was, I can't think of the name of it, my multiple sclerosis does kick in once in a while, but anyway, I've seen so much good results on it that for it to let, make people go to the black market to get their medication, I think is just, you know, totally crazy. Now, the black market, you know, people are going to go to the black market anyhow because of the fact that they cannot afford the $380 to get a card and pay off the state and stuff, so, and then for growing it, you know, it might cost, for somebody to grow it, for somebody it might cost some more money. I think this is totally ridiculous. I do believe that the patients should be able to get their medication free and have the state and our federal government control it. You know, this can do a lot of different things, but I have a lot of different ideas. I wrote a book, and I'm writing another book, but I guess right now I'll kind of shut up and we can chew on what I have said.
Before you go, would you give your name and address, please, just for the record?
Oh, my name is Larry Rathman.
Rathman.
I live in Silverton at 15376 Qual Road Northeast.
All right, thank you. Well, I'm stuck again. Perhaps Robert Zivilin, maybe, would you come up, please, and then that'll be followed by Leland Berger? And Kim, would you bring in the other sheet, too, please?
Good morning. My name is Robert Anthony Zivilich. I'm at 3195 Marcia Drive Northeast, Salem, Oregon, 97301. One of the benefits of the House bill that is supposed to be effective in March is that it's eliminating pathogen, pestilence, infected cannabis medicine, which is going to make a safer medicine for the patients. If you guys rezone where the medical dispensaries cannot operate in Marion County, you're going to create an influx in a black market where it's going to actually support people in mobs, cartels, people that don't care about creating medicine that's going to benefit Let's see here. I want to bring up separation of powers, federal and state, because I looked at your guys' revisions to 1635.060 for the conformance requirements, and I'm going to read this statement. "The federative principle was a mechanism introduced by the founders that made possible a republic spread over a vast continent. In addition, by dividing government power into co-equal independent responsibilities, each branch of government might serve as a check on the other and thus prevent either one from undermining the safety of the public liberty." I see that these meetings are set on a state of emergency, but all I see from this board session is you guys creating another emergency. I see you guys creating the exact opposite of what you're trying to do. And people need a safe access to get medicine. You're not going to get rid of the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program. I'm pretty sure state law is going to trump whatever you guys do in the county, anyway. Why you guys would combine state and federal law, I just, it's unfathomable. With things going on, there's much more things that we can take care of with permits, like the Salem Hospital that had to get redone because the contractor didn't do a good job. The state data center went out last summer, and a bunch of people didn't get unemployment and food stamps, but nobody wants to talk about those issues. Maybe their permits should get pulled. Maybe we should focus on things that actually matter, and that's all I have to say this morning.
Thank you.
And I'd like for you guys to talk to this.
Why don't you just give it to Kim, please?
There you go. Just where accounting holders want it.
Oh, I, Chair, I do have a question.
Would you come back, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you leave.
Ms. Blaine?
Sorry. You started by, and first of all, thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts. Something in House Bill 3460 makes a safer medication, can you?
All the medicine needs to be tested for pathogens, for pestilence, in making sure that the people growing the marijuana have actually taken steps to have a crop that's worth, that's safe for people to consume.
All right. Just wanted to clarify what I thought I heard you say. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Now, I didn't mention, and if you all would, Robert, his voice comes through good, but if you'd pull the microphone right up close to you, it'd help for recording and for me to hear it.
My name is Leland Berger, B-E-R-G-E-R. I live at 3427 Northeast 11th in Portland, Oregon. I am a lawyer. My bar number is 830201, which means that in April of this year, I will have been practicing for 31 years, which my wife assures me means that I'm older than dirt. I'm here today on behalf of a trade association in your community, the Salem Cannabis Industry Association, and I had submitted a written comment, and I hope you had an opportunity to take a quick look at that. Have you had a chance to see that? I don't want to repeat all of it, but...
I don't recall in particular, but I've read everything that's come through.
Should be.
Well, Kim, you know, it's interesting that you say that, Chair Brentano, because I was obliged to provide written comment by 4:00 yesterday afternoon, and when I arrived at the hearing this morning, I received an eight-page, single-spaced Exhibit A from Ms. Roy. And it's difficult, frankly, for members of the community to, do you not have the comment? Is that what you're looking for? Oh, all right.
With the plate documents, where, planning documents? So they didn't provide that to the board office?
I had submitted it to Joe Guilford, who indicated that he had made copies of all the materials I submitted, and...
Joe's saying it's in our packet for the zone code, so we do have it. No, I have not read it.
Oh, okay. Well, let me explain to you where we are.
It's not in the notebook with the...
And actually, if I could just briefly, I'd like to add some information for the Commission from the prior speakers. The oncologist recited the list of severe debilitating medical conditions that qualify patients, and the fact that one physician has, may have signed up thousands. Fact is that there are about 10,000 licensed physicians in Oregon, and about 3,000 have signed up patients. Additionally, last session, in addition to the comment, there were significant attachments that I provided. Last session, the Oregon Legislature added post-traumatic stress disorder to the list of debilitating medical conditions. The time to have a conversation about whether marijuana is medicine or not, and whether it's a good idea to allow medical marijuana, is over. We had that conversation 16 years ago, and the people passed the Oregon Medical Marijuana Act. In 1999, the federal government, I mean, I saw, the reason I mention this is that in the ordinance that would regulate and establish a permit process, it relies on a previous resolution where the county took a position against legalizing marijuana based in part on the erroneous scheduling of it under federal law in Schedule I. In Oregon, of course, it's under Schedule II because it's medicine, and federal government, again, acknowledged that in 1999 when the National Institute of Health published a study called Assessing the Science Base and reached the conclusion that it's medicine. So there's no question that it's medicine. It's also, I think, there's some confusion that I think was brought to the board through your sheriff and district attorney about what the facilities are about. The facilities don't create a public safety problem. The facilities address a public safety problem and address a health concern. Public safety problem is that the way the Medical Marijuana Act is designed, a person can designate someone to cultivate for them, but if that person cultivates more than what the patient needs, there is nowhere for it to go, except to be freely shared among patients, or some of it obviously winds up in the underground market or leaves the state. What 3460 does, the bill that creates medical marijuana facilities, is it enables the patient who owns all of the medicine to allow the grower to distribute it to a facility, be fully reimbursed by it, and allows the facilities to be fully reimbursed by the patients and caregivers to whom it distributes it. And under that scheme, for a lot of growers, what the previous speaker mentioned about how medicine should be free, for patients who have growers, it actually may wind up being free, because in exchange for being able to distribute it, growers may be willing to do that. In the written comments, I addressed three issues, I think. First of all, like the previous speaker, I was confused by the two resolutions. It looked to me like they were alternatives. Thankfully, Ms. Roy, who I want you to know is working even on a state holiday, she and I communicated yesterday, and she clarified for me that the intent of the zoning ordinance is to ban facilities in unincorporated areas of Marion County unless the permit is issued under this other ordinance. I hope that's the Commission's understanding of how the interplay between the two ordinances are. The problem is twofold. First of all, the county has no authority to ban facilities at all, and that's been clarified through this bill that was passed unanimously, and when I say unanimously, I mean 30 to 0 in the Senate yesterday morning, that would permit the municipalities, including Marion County, to regulate time, place, and manner, but not ban. And when I say but not ban, it's because the League of Oregon Cities and the League of Oregon Counties have requested the bill allowing you to ban, and that language was stricken. So initially, as to the zoning, if you're going to...
Mr. Brer, I do need you to sum it up real quick, and I'm sorry, but I've given you about double the time to now.
I just asked for as much time as you gave the oncologist, which is about half of what I've conceded.
I don't think so, but go ahead, just wrap it up if you can.
Well, I will, except it's going to take me a minute. And the reason why I think it might be advantageous for the Commission to hear what I have to say is because what I have to say has to do with, under what circumstances, the association would litigate the legality of what you're doing.
I think we understand that.
I think you haven't a clue. If you haven't read what I wrote, or if you're not willing to hear me out on it, respectfully.
I just read it. We just got a copy, and we did read it.
We just had a chance to...
Okay. So on the land use, all I'm suggesting is you clarify the language so that the permit that you're talking about in the land use ordinance is the permit procedure in the other As to the specifics of the other ordinance, the regulation establishing a permit and declaring emergency, we have these specific objections. And it has to do, frankly, with the fact that you can't do it because state law preempts you from doing it. And while you acknowledge in Resolution 14-4 a concern about complying with the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the United States, you're not complying with state law, which does preempt what you're trying to do here. 3460 permits facilities on state farmland, so you cannot prohibit that. That's on page three at section four. In section six, on page four, beginning at, the first five, there's no problem with. The number six, this whole harmless and identify about losing grants from the federal government, really, losing grants to prosecute people and arrest people? You expect that we're going to be responsible for that as an industry? I just don't understand that. Similarly, under the waiving liability, including for arrest, I mean, what if it's an illegal arrest? Those happen, and those happen in this county. That's number eight. On section A, letter B, it's a requirement for the permit that you comply with all federal, state, and local laws. Well, we can't comply with federal law because federal law prohibits this, so that provision can't be a part of a permitting process. C, I think we think that it extends it unlawfully. I read in Ms. Roy's notes that apparently Washington has extended it this way, but Washington doesn't have 3460, and it can't do that. Letter H, on the minors allowed on the business premises, 3460. The previous speaker who was talking about the regulations surrounding the testing, there's a thick stack of, there's been some hyperbole about how Oregon's the least regulated, it's simply not true. Oregon's heavily regulated the... regulated. It's simply not true. Oregon's heavily regulated the, the distribution of medical cannabis, including not permitting minors in the room where the distribution takes place. The fact is, there are about, I think, 50 minors who are in the program, who are, who are medical patients, and they're certainly allowed to come in with their parents. And so we think that the minor provision is, is not going to work. And on I, similarly, the regulations permit a, employees to be able, who are also patients, to be able to consume on the facility. I think the confusion really, if you take a look at...
All right, Mr. Berger, one minute.
This is very last thing, I promise. If you look at the last page of Ms. Roy's Exhibit A, the draft findings, she says that, she quotes the February 5th Legislative Council report as saying, "We do not venture into examination for potential conflicts between the statute that creates medical marijuana facilities and the Controlled Substance Act." There is no positive conflict. The Oregon Supreme Court in Emerald Steel said the only preemption is as to use, and in Willis versus Winters said that the Medical Marijuana Act is not an obstacle to federal enforcement. All the Medical Marijuana Act does, all the Medical Marijuana Act does, is it accepts people from arrest, prosecution, and forfeiture and incarceration under state law. And again, and the la, very last thing I'll tell you is, I really, I really do need you to recognize that the public safety aspect of this is it takes people who are otherwise consigned to the underground market to get their medicine, and allows them to get it in a, to have safe access in a regulated marketplace. Thank you very much. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Amy Zimmerman, and then Ernie Lucas.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to say thank you for listening to what you have, and I know many of you have mentioned, again, Amy Zimmerman, 5150, Norma Avenue South, Salem, Oregon, 97306. We've implemented our first newsletter, Salem Cannabis Industry Association. There are currently eight medical marijuana facilities onboard. Again, our doors are open. Please, I haven't seen any of you. Come say hi, you know? We urge you to, we have answers. I mean, we're here to work with you. We're not here to fight. We all know attorneys are expensive. We can all lawyer up, but why? Let's, let's show America something different and actually work together, you know? And I'm very, again, John Andrade from Biomed, very disappointed in his presentation and the lack of academic research that went into creating that. And so I've started compiling a little bit of information beyond that. I'm very passionate about this, as my son needs this medicine to eat. So please, let's work together. It's all I ask. You know where we are. Do you have any questions for me? Okay.
Thank you. Ernie Lucas?
Good morning. My name is Ernie Lucas. I live at 10975 Parish Gap Road, Turner, Oregon. I'm also a business owner here in Salem, Oregon. I own Bagger's Coffee Company, and I'm also a medical marijuana patient. I'd just like you guys to know that if this is what you guys think that the populace of Salem wants, that this is not what they want. And I might be among the youngest people in this room, and we will be outvoting next year, and I just want you guys to know that. Thank you.
All right. Willie Santana, then Christopher Ross.
My name's Willie Santana. I live at 1310 Alder Drive, Kaiser, Oregon, 97303. I am epileptic. Got diagnosed when I was 16 years old. When I was 16, I didn't know much about medical marijuana. My mom mostly took me to doctors, and they prescribed me medications. Most of the medications that I was given had effects on my health. I've had gums that had swelled up on me due to medication, body parts that have not responded well with what I wanted them to do because of medication. Once I tried medical marijuana, once I was like about 17 years old for medicinal use, I started finding out that it would help in the process of recovering, once I had have a seizure. Because once I'm done having a seizure, I cannot comprehend very well with people. I cannot eat. I cannot sleep, and I have horrible pain in my head. If I take marijuana, it eases that pain, helps me sleep, and it helps me eat. Also, before I have a seizure, I have these weird feelings in my body, kind of like a real nervous, I'm not sure how to explain it, but I'm not 100% there. And if I can reach my medicine, my marijuana, because it is like, if I take it, it activates real quick, not like if I take a pill or something. It has to dissolve in my body, and it won't act fast. So if I take that before this happens, it'll slow down the effect and sometimes possibly make it so it won't happen. But right now, we are having trouble with dispensaries being where they should be, and I don't think it's fair for people to kick out dispensaries that are already set, who have been going through the trouble to help people and trying to follow all the rules, and then still get problems. So pretty much you guys are making it really hard for patients to get their medicine legally and make sure it's safe. That's one thing that I really like about the, the new program that's coming up, is that everything will have to be tested. That is one thing that is really important and does help a lot, because now the, the patient will know what they are receiving. They will know what numbers they need for their body. Every different strain there is, is genetically different. One strain will not work for everybody. You have to find the one that works for you. That is why epileptics need CBD strains, and a lot of people who have a lot of, of pain will need something with more THC and CBN, because that's what helps with the pain and with the sleep. So pretty much you guys are going to make it a little bit harder for us patients to receive our medicine, and will increase the black market, something we do not want to see happen. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Ross.
Kim, do you have additionals?
My name's Christopher Ross, 4088 State Street, Salem, Oregon, 97301. The pamphlet I handed out is just some letters from, the first one's a daycare in our neighborhood. They said, pretty much, they'd rather have us there than the black market. The next one is the produce store across the street from us, says that they've had no problems, that we seem to run a legitimate business. Third one is the taco truck next to us. They said that they have had no problems with us, and they like us being there. Then the pictures are, the first picture on the top is our club. The second one is the entrance. You've noticed there's no one under an 18 permitted sign. There's a locked door, a window you have to check in, security system, cameras, everything right there. The next page is the houses next door to us. If you notice the picture, first picture of our building, the next pictures looked exactly like ours before we remodeled it, which therefore cleaned up our neighborhood. Third picture is our counter. Seems like a normal legitimate business. The next picture is the bars on the windows for added security, and the last ones are safes. Next, I'd like to say a little bit and critique your draft. Oregon Tuesday unanimously, unanimously approved Senate Bill 1531, as it was with dash five and still left out dash eight, which means there is not a legal right to ban and has to be reasonable locations, and my lawyer and a handful of other lawyers agree with me that daycare clause in this draft has no legal definition of reasonable. I can open a state-approved daycare for $45 next to every facility in Marion County. That is unreasonable. Section one, it is illegal with dash eight left out of 1531. Section two, B, completely illegal, dash eight gone, illegal under dash five. Section three, A, illegal, there is no dash eight in 1531. Under section three B, illegal, dash eight gone, dash five says reasonable, and that's not. Illegal in a few other landmark cases. As he mentioned, section four, completely illegal. Section five, illegal, dash eight. You have no ability to ban under the law. Section six, A, not a chance. Illegal, dash eight, you cannot ban. Section six, B, seemed reasonable to us. We would adhere to that. C, illegal under dash eight, but we can agree to pay a county permit not, not exceeding the amount of $250. D, one through five are reasonable. They seem to be, as written, but not six through eight. They will not stand under 1531-dash-five. Section seven, A and B, illegal and will not hold up in court. C, will work if named facility permit, not ban permit, since you do not have the right. Once again, but not to exceed the amount of $250. D, may work, but has to give us assurance that it will not be abused or unreasonable. Section eight, A, may be reasonable. B, unreasonable. C, completely illegal under 1531-dash-five and will not stand in court where I'm willing to take the matter. Dash D, or, section D under sec, or, section eight, D, seems reasonable. E, seems reasonable, though the DUI will not stand under 3460 plus 1531-dash-five. F, seems reasonable. G, we need more clarity. H, could work, but 3460 requires a waiting room for minors inside to prevent child neglect in a vehicle. So as Lee said, there's already pretense there that you can't do that. Not a chance in hell on I. I fought for one of my employees who just spoke before us, Willie Santana, and I will fight in court for it. We have people who have seizures as him, and we need them to be able to take their medicine. Section nine, will not stand, since 1531 took out dash eight and dash five supports me, and I'm prepared to go to court. Dash 10, illegal, under that, under 1531-dash-five. Section 11, illegal under 1531-dash-five. Section 12, under 1531-dash-five is unreasonable, cannot be denied if OHA gives a permit. Section 13, 1531-dash-five, says reasonable, and that's not. Section 14, seems unreasonable. If one part is flawed, seems the rest would need reviewed. 15, up to you to have lawsuits and be voted out. Thank you.
Thank you. Margot Lucas, I believe.
My name is Margot Lucas. I'm going to try to keep it really short for everybody. I am a marijuana patient, a business owner, and a resident of Polk County, but I do run a business, a marijuana clinic, doctor clinic, that serves the greater Salem area. I did want to address, first of all, what, one of the gentlemen earlier, I believe it was Mr. Withnell, did address some things regarding medical marijuana, and I would love to follow up after today with some written materials for you regarding the current research on marijuana and that type of thing. There's a big movement in medical marijuana towards what are called CBD strains, and these are strains that we are trying more and more and more to get non-psychoactive. These are non-high strains of medical marijuana. So I just wanted to clarify that for you, and I would love to present you with some, a packet based on that for your knowledge in the future, and I will follow up with that. Also, I would like to add to that packet some statements from some of the doctors I work with and what their standards for initiate, for okaying these cards are. And there, I know one doctor has expressed to me recently that she has only ever signed one card for a minor, and that was on a recommendation from a neurologist for a childhood seizure disorder. And, you know, there's a lot of concern about minors, and, and I, I share that concern, but we do want to work with you on any of the problems that either side perceives in this industry. And I'm here today to ask all of you to please work with us. There's no sense for any of us to create less access for medical marijuana patients, and I want to stress that. We are medical marijuana people, and that is the, the state law, and that is what we work under. And we don't want to have medical marijuana patients punished for what the perception of the industry may be. Let's all look at the facts about what is going on with these facilities. I would like to ask all of you on the panel, if you're aware of any complaints, the, the club that is in your, the dispensary that is in your county area has been running for years, and I would love to know. Have there been any complaints? Has there, has there been any complaints that anybody knows about?
I'm not going to answer your question, but I have my own.
Right.
By what authority have they been operating all these years?
Well...
I don't, I'm just asking.
I'm just saying, we can help with our lawyer.
Anyway, excuse me. I shouldn't have responded, nor do I intend to again.
That's all right, sir. I, I appreciate your response, but that's, I think that's a legal question for another time, but, but I would ask you, again, not to punish medical marijuana patients that, that we are legally serving, and, and, you know, to keep access open in the county for medical marijuana patients. This, this is going to bring jobs and hopefully future revenues to the area, and we hope that you'll work with us to, to come up with a reasonable set of rules that we all can work with, and that's what I'm asking you today. There's really no sense in getting into protracted lawsuits, and it's not going to help the, the dispensary people. Just so you know, I'm a member of the Oregon, I didn't say this in the beginning, but I am a member of the Oregon Cannabis Industry Association and the Salem Cannabis Industry Association. I'm a strong supporter of law enforcement. I come from a law enforcement family. We do want to work with municipalities, with law enforcement, and we'd like to move medical marijuana forward so that safe, patients do have safe access. And I will follow up. I told you I'd keep it short, but I will follow up with some informational stuff that I hope you will take the time to read, and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. That's everyone that signed up, and I'd like to thank you all for, for mostly keeping things pretty short. We got a pretty good flavor of your concerns, and, and we'll go on with our meeting from here and get, get at it, the subjects you're interested in just a little bit. The next item's the consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman?
All right. Mr. Chair? I would move today's consent calendar. We have three items. The first one is under a district attorney. Approve amendment number one to receive $125,000 additional funds from Oregon Department of Human Services for Child Welfare Proceedings. Under the sheriff, approve amendment number six to research, to receive $34,854 in additional funds from the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Shemawa Indian School, to provide law enforcement services, and to approve receipt of $200,000 from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department to provide patrol services for Silver Falls State Park and Detroit Lake Recreation Area through June 30th, 2019.
Our second motion?
I have to move the second, and to approve the consent calendar I just read. Any further discussion? I don't hear any, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Our first action item is under Public Works Planning. Consider amendments to the Marion County Code, Title 16 Urban Zone Code, and Title 17 Rural Zone Code. Joe Fenimore.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, this is Joe Fenimore. On January 8th, 2014, the Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution initiating revisions to the Marion County Urban Rural Zone Codes. The purpose of the revisions is to clarify in the two codes related to uses that may be in violation of state or federal laws. The Board held a public hearing on February 12th. At the end of the hearing, the Board closed the hearing and left the written record open until 4:00 PM on Tuesday, February 18th. The... Um, the written information submitted during that period included a letter opposing the regulation of medical marijuana with no specific comments about the zone code update. Um, it is included in the file because it was mailed to the planning division, and it wasn't clear which, which case it was for. I believe there's a copy, you also had it in the other packet. Um, there was a document submitted by the Salem Cannabis Industry Association. The letter argues that the county cannot rely on federal law to void complying with state law, that Senate Bill fifteen thirty-one will resolve issues of local regulation of medical marijuana facilities, and that the county should delay action until after this legislative session. And finally, if the county intends to establishing a permitting process to allow facilities in commercial and industrial zones, then exception language should be added to the zone code that clearly allows these facilities when a permit is, is obtained. In addition to the letter, there was also memorandum submitted by county legal counsel regarding the facial versus applied challenge to the ordinance language. My understanding is since the language is not specifically call out or is not limited to medical marijuana facilities or controlled substances, that any challenge would have to be made when the ordinance is applied directly to a property. Um, and that's something that Gloria and Scott can talk about. Finally, there was one more item we discovered at the hearing, that there's a small change that was missed in the proposed language. Under the proposed changes, in the last sentence of the urban code change, it says, "Failure to conform to other applicable laws may be grounds," instead of shall be grounds, "for revocation." This same change from shall to may should be made to the last sentence in the rural code also, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And are there any?
I do have...
Go ahead.
Three questions, three or four, maybe? All right. Um, first of all, thank you, Joe, for the summary. Uh, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, correct?
Correct.
This is a land use proceeding, can you just briefly explain the difference between a quasi-judicial proceeding, a legislative proceeding, or maybe we'd let Gloria handle that, all right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the, the difference between a quasi-judicial, uh, hearing for a land use, uh, code change is because of state law, which requires us to follow certain processes when we go amend a land use ordinance. And for a quasi-judicial, that means that the decision that you make is on the record. So it's the information that was presented at the public hearing, uh, as well as the information that was submitted by four P.M., uh, yesterday, which did include the memo from legal counsel, so our comments relative to this ordinance were submitted at the same time as everyone else. Uh, and, uh, this is compared to the second ordinance, which is a purely legislative ordinance, which does not require public hearing. It does allow you to consider information that may be more broadly accessible, uh, through public media or other information, uh, that, um, would not be necessarily just an on-the-record type proceeding. This, uh, ordinance would be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals compared to the other ordinance, which would be appealed to Marion County Circuit Court. So there are two different tracks for these two different ordinances, and that's reflected by the kind of, the nature of the proceeding.
And then, Joe, could you, uh, describe to us, uh, we kinda got worried about it, but just so people here can hear, about what happened in terms of the packet being sent after four o'clock yesterday, and why we didn't have it until a little bit later in the meeting today?
Okay, I waited till after four and put the packet together, and had it delivered to the board's office. Um, I also emailed each of you a copy, I believe, at the same time, last night before I left. But I'm not, I'd have to double check.
I don't think I got it, just... Okay, so, but then...
That's, that's...
Right, and so, then the issue was, as we understand it, that it got, you got, you took it to the board office?
Correct.
And Kim left the board office last night without the packet, knowing that the packet was coming, and came directly here, is that correct? So that was where the confusion happened?
That was where the confusion...
Right. So then you went and got the packet from the board office while we were having testimony, made copies...
On the other issue.
And provided it to us, and we passed the one copy around that we had.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware, kinda, how that confusion happened. So then, I guess the last question that I have is that this, um, land use proceeding that we're doing here, this quasi-judicial proceeding, requires, uh, the county, uh, all of our various zoning laws to comply with local, state, and federal law, or local, state, or federal law. Is medical marijuana dispensaries the only situation that we can think of where we might, might want to comply with, uh, federal law?
I think for the most part, we, we naturally do anyway, for instance, FEMA floodplain regulations are federal law, and we have a floodplain ordinance itself that, that does comply with those. So there are other laws that, that this could apply to, none that I've been able to find directly at this time.
Hey, you said FEMA is one, that's a federal law, or are there other federal laws that govern...
Um, there's, uh, Endangered Species Act, there's, uh, I assume there's probably DEQ, uh, pollution standards, those kind of things, they're all federal laws that, that potentially could be impacted by, by this.
Right, and so we're required to comply with all of those federal laws? And we haven't necessarily listed it as a requirement of us before, but we do have to...
Correct.
...conform to those laws.
And I think in the rural code, we said, it specifically referred, we would not issue a permit in violation of a federal law. Um, it didn't say anything about the use itself, and so the, the idea was to put the word "use" in there and also apply the federal law inside the urban growth bounty to the urban zone code.
All right, thank you.
Joe, we don't have in front of us what I'd like to see, and I may have seen it this morning, but I'm, think I'm going to ask for about a ten-minute recess, those copies can be made, we have them in front of us, and a good chance to look them over. So I'm sorry for everybody, but I think you'd rather we're looking at things than not. So we'll come back at, at ten after ten.
What are we missing?
All right, we are back, uh, continuing to consider amendments to Marion County Code, urban and rural. We took a bit of a timeout just to make sure we had everything, it turns out we did, and I think we're prepared to, uh, to continue. So...
Couple more questions?
Go ahead, and, yeah.
All right, thank you. So during the break, Joe, I, when you came up, you clarified where that may and shall are changing, and gave a little explanation about that, so, and you had said it so quickly, I actually had it backwards, so, and I, if I had it backwards, maybe someone else had it backwards too, so, just to make sure everybody's understanding what the changes are, would you go through that a little bit more slowly and with a little bit of explanation?
Okay, I will do that. Um, under the proposed changes, we have a section in the code that's, that says, that says, "All land use actions shall be conducted in full compliance with any other county ordinance, code, and requirement of state law and federal laws. Failure, failure to conform to other laws may be grounds for revocation of any permits." Instead of shall be grounds, it may be grounds for, for revocation of any permits enforced in action, including but not limited to a citation, in accordance with chapter one-twenty-five of the Marion County Code. So what that does is allows the board some, some, um, flexibility in applying that, in applying this particular section. If they want to issue, if they want to revoke a permit, or enforce against a use, they, they have that ability.
So just to reiterate what I'm hearing you say, that on the top of the back page of this memo that we have from you dated January twenty-eighth, twenty fourteen, the word "shall" is stricken, and the word "may" was put in.
That is correct.
However, towards the bottom of it, in the other code, and I'm always confused which is which, here, is this one the...
The bottom is the rural code.
Rural code. The "shall," it's the second from the bottom paragraph, was not stricken, and that should have been stricken, and a "may" put there as well, so that both codes are identical.
Correct.
All right. And that is to provide the board with flexibility around that?
Correct.
Okay. And then the second thing that I thought would be useful as we were having this discussion is for you to describe what the impact is of passing this in terms of then, how does planning use their ordinances, and how, where will this interface with the public? At what point will this have an impact on, uh, the people of Marion County?
In most instances, it's going to be when someone comes in for a permit, particularly a land use action permit, they want to build something near an airport, the FAA regulations have, have federal regulations on heights, types of uses, those kinds of things. As we talked about before, anything in the floodplain is going to be, is going to be regulated by this also. Um, most of the time, it's going to be a land use action that triggers something. Once in a while, a building permit, if we get a notice from a federal agency of an ongoing problem somewhere, and we're able to note that, then we would have the ability at that time to decide if we wanted to allow the use, ba, based on a federal law.
Right. So just, so that we can be really clear, so a land use action means that someone comes in, wants to do something like you described, they fill out the proper paperwork, the planning staff looks at it, makes a determination about whether or not it's workable. Uh, if it's cut and dried, then generally, we never see it at the board level. If there's some controversy over it, there's a neighbor that doesn't like what they're doing, there's some other group that doesn't like what's going on, and it becomes controversial, then it goes to a hearings officer, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the hearings officer, then it becomes like an administrative hearing, it is an administrative hearing, so, it's not just like one, and, uh, attorneys may be involved, people can represent themselves, evidence is presented, people argue their case in front of the administrative hearings officer, and she or he submits then a, uh, a, uh...
Decision.
Decision, thank you. Well, it's a, it's a report...
Correct.
That, and it's multiple pages, and it goes through all of the various related land use and zoning laws, and says whether there's been evidence that this particular action complies or conforms with all of those different state, federal, and local, um, ordinances and laws. Then if there, if one of the parties is unhappy, which generally they are, with the hearing officer's decision and determines that they want to take it to the board, then the board becomes like an appeals, uh, quasi-judicial body that then reviews that, has a bit more latitude in terms of interpretation around those provisions, and makes a determination. And then, as Gloria said, then it can get appealed to generally the Land Use Board of Appeals after that. So this is really, uh, in the urban and rural zone codes what guides that process, but this doesn't really have a life without someone moving forward with a partic, particular land use action that they want to take.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, no. Thank you for going over that. So what, what we have in front of us, then, this isn't, oh, excuse me, an action item, and it's on here as considering amendments to the Marion County Code, Title sixteen Urban Zone Code and Title seventeen Rural Zone Code. The action we are actually looking at taking, and I think this would be helpful too, to walk through this, um, so everyone here or anybody listening to this understands this process a little more clearly. So can, would you walk through that, Joe, or Gloria, if you'd like to?
Um, so this is, this is the board's opportunity to decide whether they want to adopt this ordinance, or want to adopt these changes. If they choose to, they can direct staff to prepare an ordinance and bring it back to them for adoption. And so what, what would happen is if you made a decision to go forward today, you would instruct us to prepare the ordinance, and we would bring it back at a later session for, for official adoption.
Okay. And if I could add, it will be, will that be noticed? I mean, will it be brought back, is, will it be two steps or one step between then?
It will be two steps. The first step is to, is, is for you to schedule, or basically notify that you're going to adopt an ordinance on a certain date.
Right, so that would generally appear on the consent calendar?
Correct.
So people here would see on consent that we're setting up a time and place then to adopt the ordinance?
Correct.
Is then there a public hearing that goes along with adopting the ordinance, or is it an action item?
There is not. When, at the adoption time, it's, it's a straight action item by the board.
All right.
No public comment permitted, and no, and no additional evidence allowed at that time.
Okay, because it is a land use hearing?
Correct.
All right.
Okay, so are we ready?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to get, get this correct then. Um, so I would make a motion that, that we approve, propose, the proposed amendments and direct staff to draft, draft this, and as I understand it, then we will be reviewing that again, and that would be, did I hear you correctly, Commissioner, that is a public hearing?
Not a public hearing.
It's not, however, people can clearly make it. That's what I didn't think it was, and I thought I heard you say it would be, so...
So I will second the motion.
All right, I just have a question, so do we need to set dates for, or to say that that'll be set at a future time, or even address it?
Uh, two things first. Um, you want the change with the, with the additional make, or the shall change to make, correct?
Yes.
What we'll do is, is bring it back as consent to schedule for the following session.
And if I, could I ask, so will it be on consent as early as next week?
That is my plan.
Okay, so it would be...
If you adopt something.
Right, so you would be, go back, prepare the ordinance, put it on consent, which notices that we're gonna hear it, and then in two weeks...
Two weeks...
We'd be back here to adopt the ordinance.
Correct.
But we cannot have even public comment on that ordinance in two weeks, because it was a quasi-judicial hearing, and all comments had to be made in writing, verbally, last week, in writing by four o'clock yesterday.
Correct.
Right.
All right, it's been moved in second, that we approve the proposed amendments and direct staff to prepare, uh, new or updated ordinance.
With the changes.
With the changes.
Yeah.
Further discussion? All right, I hear it ends, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chair, before we leave, um, this, I, I, I just want to add to the record, um, it could also apply to our, to the, to the next one as well, but since we took a lot of testimony, um, this morning, that clearly applies to our next item. Um, I believe we all received, but I have here in my hand a, from, to the Marion County Board of Commissioners, from Bill Cummins, the Chair of the Marion County Economic Development Advisory Board, um, uh, supporting the, the board, um, actions. I could, I think you've seen this?
Yes, it's in the...
So if we can just make it a, a part of, um, the record, I won't read the whole thing, but the, what, what I would share is that the members of the Economic Development Advisory Board fear that increasing the supply of marijuana through legalization will increase problems in the workplace and in the economy. It's also feared that legalization of marijuana will cause a gray area of legal issues for both employers and employees in the workplace, which will also increase the cost of operating a business. Um, so they are offering their support to the Board of Commissioners and express caution about the adverse effects of marijuana use in the workplace and the economy. Also, I had received, um, a couple of emails, um, they may have gone to, to both of you as well, one from Sherri and Bill Crocker, uh, regarding, we heard some testimony this morning about locations of places, there's a concern, um, expressed, um, on seven, at seventeen twenty-five Capitol Street, uh, there's a, a pregnancy support center there, there's a marijuana office next door, and what's expressed in here are the concerns about people standing around the parking lot, and, um, the smell of the smoke, and, um, that the parking lot is shared, and so you have teens and children accessing that. And, uh, and another one, um, this is from Gene Pfeiffer, um, relaying an incident, um, back a while ago, and the concern about, um, inappropriate use, um, in inappropriate areas, um, debris left behind, and concerned about, um, trash being able to be picked up and things like that, and I know this really is not what, what you folks were talking about this morning, but there's a lot of community concern about the, um, extenuating cons, problems that, that arise as we're having this discussion, so I'll just add those two information that's been received and asked to be shared.
Right. And, Mr. Chair, if I could clarify, that would be information with regard to the ordinance that we're going to look at next, not with the land use, since it didn't go in...
Right.
...by four o'clock yesterday.
Well, let's see, yeah, the...
It wasn't submitted to plan by that time.
Right, no, you're, no, you're correct, yeah.
All right, we, we'll move on then. The next item is to consider adoption of an ordinance in the matter of regulating medical marijuana dispensary facilities in the unincorporated area of Marion County, establishing a permit process, and this is by emergency procedure. Scott Norris, you've come up, you want to start, or Gloria?
I believe Gloria will start.
All right, fine. All right, fine.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm Gloria Roy, Marion County Council. This matter is before the Board of Commissioners under its legislative authority to address issues that are in the unincorporated area of Marion County. What that means is that, to the extent that the board passes or adopts this ordinance, it would only apply outside of city boundaries. Marion County, and, and a lot of people don't realize the number of services that county government provides. Some services are across the entire county, like elections, tax and assessment. Other responsibilities, as in are what are called the police powers, are those areas that are outside of cities, because cities have their own authority and jurisdiction to decide what happens within their city boundaries. So I want to clarify that this ordinance is only in the unincorporated areas of Marion County. This is a very interesting situation, well, interesting for lawyers who like this kind of stuff, but not necessarily for the public and the board that has to deal with it. But it's a unusual situation where we have federal law that specifically prohibits something, in this instance marijuana, whether it's for medical uses or otherwise, and state law, which through voter approval of the medical marijuana program, and then legislative approval of dispensaries, has put the board in really a difficult situation. You know, you take oaths of office to comply with both state and federal law, and when those two are at odds with each other, it's very difficult to navigate your responsibilities, including all the responsibilities that fall down to the county to provide specific services. And that's kind of the difficulty that the board finds itself in today. There's a lot of information out there. There are a lot of attorneys that feel one way or the other, and reasonable attorneys can disagree. Well, even unreasonable attorneys can disagree. But in this instance, it's a highly charged issue. I don't believe I have seen this many people attending board sessions at a regular since the board was considering citing a gravel quarry. So it's, it's certainly as controversial, and certainly as emotional and charged for individuals. So we have this federal law. We have the U.S. Department of Justice that has said, "Well, we're not going to enforce these federal laws, you don't have to worry." Two years ago, these same people said, "We are going to enforce it." So it's, it's difficult to have any kind of a surety when federal law has not been changed, and it's just a matter of them choosing to enforce it or not. The counties and local governments are not the only ones who find themselves in this situation. Banks have, federally insured banks have also found themselves in a situation where they're not quite sure whether or not to do business with marijuana businesses. And that had been a significant impediment to businesses that had been starting up in Colorado and in Washington. So in the true nature of the fast-moving, changing landscape that we're trying to deal with, you know, February 14th, the U.S. Treasury and U.S. Department of Justice again said, "Oh, well, we're not going to enforce the Treasury laws now." So the banks are finding themselves in the same lack of comfort that local governments have. Are you going to enforce it or not? These are just guidelines. And they specifically had said, the, the head of the Colorado Bankers Association, the Washington Bankers Association, that it's not enough just to issue guidelines. Until the federal law is changed, there really is no security or confidence in that the federal government won't come down and attempt some sort of enforcement. So we have the federal law. Within state law, we have our medical marijuana program. And we also have what's the new dispensary law, or House Bill 3640. That House bill directed the Oregon Health Authority to draft rules and regulations relating to medical marijuana dispensaries. And there are some significant concerns that local governments have about that law. It appears, and this is just from the perspective of local government, that this law was written in a silo from the perspective of the medical marijuana program. Whereas in the past, the medical marijuana program regulated the growers and the cardholders. But now with the dispensaries, they are moving into regulating businesses and land use and zoning. And they did it from the perspective of a healthcare perspective under the medical marijuana program. So this is where we're seeing some real conflicts with how that program was set up and how it significantly impedes local governments' abilities to carry out its other responsibilities. One, there's, there have been a lot of deficiencies that have been pointed out in the law. And we're not going to, I won't necessarily go through all of them right now. There are some detailed in the findings. But there's a couple of significant aspects to this. One is that, under House Bill 3640, the Oregon Health Authority will not disclose the location of a facility or the person responsible for the facility. Now, it does allow an applicant to choose to disclose and be published on a list, at least as to the location of the facility, but not the person responsible for it. And so, you know, that right there is kind of a confusion between the medical privacy of confidentiality of the cardholders and their medical information, and business information, and business owner information. So it really isn't appropriate in, in this situation. And it does lead to some impossibilities of the county in carrying out its other responsibilities for public health and safety. The other significant issue with this is that House Bill 3640 purports to allow a medical marijuana dispensary on agricultural land. And this is a significant concern for Marion County. If you look at Marion County, we're not that big of a county, you know, but it is a gem in the middle of the Willamette Valley that is the highest agriculture producer in the entire state. And so the protection of agricultural lands is something that the board has taken very seriously. It is a significant driver of economic development and stability in this county. And the board has passed resolutions in support of agriculture. The, there are several reasons why a dispensary is not appropriate on agricultural land, including that it violates all of the more specific state laws regarding land use zoning. There are some real state policies on protection, protecting agricultural lands. So for exclusive farm use, agricultural lands can be exclusive farm use, or it can be land that is used to grow Christmas trees. It doesn't include other timberland, and it doesn't include any federal forest lands or anything like that. So the farm use is basically defined as the growing of crops, the, you know, the production and distribution of the crops. It also includes other things like a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use, certain structures that are supporting the farm use as long as it's on the parcel where the farm use or part of the farm use is going. But this law specifically says that a dispensary cannot be at the location of a grow site. So it is, and we've had a public comment that the dispensaries are operating like a storefront-type business, that there are other products there. It's not just the, the raw crop coming off of the farmland. It is more of a storefront business, more of a commercial-type business. And to allow that in exclusive farm use zone is just contrary to, to state law. And the Department of Land Conservation and Development, which is the state agency charged with that, is also of the opinion that this would not be a proper use on exclusive farm use. So that is something that Marion County is considering when it looks at what is the proper location for a dispensary, to the extent that they're allowed it all. And finally, is, the big issue is preemption. This is something that most likely would require a court determination. There are a lot of opinions either way, whether federal law preempts the state law, whether state law preempts the local law. We have currently Senate Bill 3640, and the implementing rules, 3640 is codified or as Chapter 475. And if you look at some of the even legislative council opinions, in particular, the last one that came out on February 5th, I believe, it specifically says that, you know, House Bill 3640 does not completely preempt local governments' regulations. It does not contain express preemption language. And the opinion suggests that the county could make some minor regulations, so long as it doesn't really impact the program. But that is just one attorney's opinion to its client, legislative council to the legislators. The extent of the regulations that a county could impose is kind of an open question right now. Senate Bill 1531, to the extent that it finally makes it through the full legislative process and gets signed by the governor, may include some limitations, which they say are reasonable regulations related to time, place, and manner. The ordinance before the board today doesn't really propose to regulate the time, but certainly the place and the manner. And one of the places is that it's not appropriate on agricultural land. But there are other restrictions, other additional buffers that were being considered that will be described more fully, as well as some other requirements so that the program, to the extent that it's allowed in Marion County, is as protective of public health and safety, as narrowly tailored, but also does provide an opportunity to make an application in certain areas for a medical marijuana dispensary. There's a lot, like I said, there's a lot of information out there, it's a fast-moving target. I will point out a couple of things. One difference between last board session and the draft ordinance before you today is that, and this is a provision that has been commented upon, is last week, Commissioner Carlson had read from a prior version that referred to a, a bond, a letter of credit, or a, some other financial assurance, like a cash deposit with the county, as a security for the public grants and contracts that the county signs, and it contains terms that says we're going to comply with the Controlled Substances Act. When you look at that provision, you have to say, okay, first of all, is it possible for them to comply, or is it an impossible condition? We recommend that it be changed the day before the banks. You know, the U.S. Treasury said, "Okay, we're not going to enforce the Treasury regulations." But you still don't know if a bank is going to give a bond or a letter of credit or anything like that. We had concerns, have to talk with our county treasurer, that our bank, which is a federally insured bank, would not even allow us to make a deposit of, to hold a trust account, to hold a deposit. And also, you have to look at whether or not that particular condition is a speculative condition. Willis V. Winter's analysis, it would be preempted if it was just speculative. So to the extent that this condition might be speculative in terms of whether or not a federal agency would actually ask us for our money back, the proposed requirement is equally as speculative. We're not going to require any bond or assurance upfront, but the indemnification provision is that if they come after us for the money back, we're going to be looking to the business that caused that to happen for indemnification. So that, that is a significant change from, as was discussed last week. Other than that, if you have any specific questions on just kind of the background that I would ask Scott to go through the ordinance.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Scott Norris from the Office of Legal Counsel. The draft ordinance has two recitals, the first of which references Resolution 14-4, which opposes the legalization of marijuana, and finds that allowing the operation of medical marijuana facilities could be contrary to the oaths of the Commissioners and the Sheriff and the District Attorney, and detrimental to the public peace, health, and safety. The second recital references the findings and incorporates them as Exhibit A to the ordinance, and summarizes those, those findings.
Scott, could you pull it a little closer, please? Thank you.
Section two, moving to section two of the ordinance, adopts specifically the findings to support this ordinance. And subsection B describes the purpose to enact a, a new chapter of the Marion County Code on the subject of medical marijuana dispensary facilities, which explicitly prohibits medical marijuana dispensary facilities in the unincorporated area of Marion County, particularly in farm and forest zones, and provides a ban exemption permit for facilities in commercial, industrial, or mixed-use zones. And subsection C makes it clear that this ordinance is not intended to, to regulate possession, cultivation, or use of medical marijuana at a grow site or by anyone who is a, a cardholder. Section three lists the, is the, the general prohibition section. Subsection A makes it unlawful to operate, use, or allow the operation of a medical marijuana dispensary facility in the unincorporated area of Marion County without having a current ban exemption permit. And subsection B makes it unlawful to lease, rent, or otherwise allow any medical marijuana dispensary facility... dispensary facility in a building, structure, premises, location, or land in the unincorporated area of Marion County unless the dispensary facility has a current ban exemption permit. Subsection four, section four, is the prohibition of medical marijuana dispensary facilities on farm or forest-zoned land. Section five introduces the, the requirement for a ban exemption permit. Subsection A states that medical marijuana dispensary facilities may be located in commercial or industrial zones in the unincorporated areas of Marion County upon issuance of a permit. And subsection B states that facilities may be located in mixed-use zones, if not primarily residential, farm, or forest, after the facility has obtained a permit. Section six contains the application requirements for a ban exemption permit. Subsection, specifically, subsection B requires the individual to whom the Oregon Health Authority, the OHA, has issued a permit to be the applicant before the county. Subsection C allows for the creation of an application fee. And subsection D contains the application requirements. There are, there are eight in subsection D. Specifically, they are the name of the business and the business location, the name of the business owner and the manager, if those two are different, a, a copy of the OHA permit, confirmation of passing a criminal background check for all owners, employees, or volunteers that will work at the location, written authorization for OHA to disclose information to Marion County about the business and the applicant, in conjunction with the OHA permit. Subsection six is the indemnification language that Gloria referenced, stating that the permit holder shall save harmless, indemnify, and defend Marion County and any of its elected officials, officers, employees, or agents for any claims, including attorney fees arising out of county liability to agencies of the federal government pursuant to contracts or grants from those federal agencies occurring due to the issuance of a ban exemption permit to the permit holder. And subsections seven and eight are liability waivers. Subsection seven is a waiver of liability against Marion County and any of its elected officials, officers, employees, or agents for any claims arising out of the revocation or refusal to grant a permit, for any claims alleging a taking or inverse condemnation due to a revocation or refusal to permit a particular location or relocation of a permitted facility which fails to satisfy all the requirements of the permit, or for any actions taken or not taken by Marion County pursuant to the permit. And subsection eight is a liability waiver against Marion County and any of its elected officials, officers, employees, or agents for claims for any lawful arrest or prosecution of the applicant or any employees, clients, or customers for a violation of federal or state criminal laws. Section seven addresses the term of a permit and renewal. Subsection A makes it clear that a permit lasts for one year. Subsection B says that in order to renew, the applicant must submit an application to the county no more than 90 days and at least 60 days prior to the expiration of the existing permit. And the renewal application shall contain the information and documentation required of an original application set forth in Section Six, which I just went through. Subsection C allows for a renewal fee. And subsection D states that if a specific location that is the subject of a renewal application has a documented history of law enforcement contacts during the time that the, the location was permitted, the sheriff may recommend denial of the renewal application. If the sheriff recommends denial, the sheriff forwards that recommendation to the planning division, and the planning division may issue a notice of denial based upon the sheriff's recommendation. A denial of a renewal application based on a sheriff's recommendation may be reviewed by the hearings officer pursuant to Section 12, which I'll go through in a, in a little bit. Section eight contains ban exemption permit regulations. In general, they are that the, the person or the entity has to comply with all of the applicable building and zoning requirements for the particular location. The person or entity must comply with federal, state, and local laws which are applicable to the business. The medical marijuana facility cannot be located within 1,000 feet of the boundary of a property containing a pre-kindergarten, Head Start program, community learning center, or childcare facility which is regulated by ORS Chapters 329 or 329A, a relief nursery regulated by ORS Chapter 417, a public park, or a location which is prohibited by OHA regulations, which currently are within 1,000 feet of a public or private elementary, secondary, or career school attended primarily by minors, or within 1,000 feet of another medical marijuana dispensary facility. Subsection D requires compliance with Chapter 8.25 of the Marion County Code, which is the alarm ordinance. Subsection E requires all employees and volunteers of the business to submit to a criminal background check, and makes it a violation of the ordinance if an employee or volunteer has been convicted of manufacture, delivery of a controlled substance in Schedule 1 or 2 within five years of the date of the background check, or has been convicted more than once of manufacture, delivery of a controlled substance in Schedules 1 or 2 at any time. Those are the background check requirements from, for OHA permities under House Bill 3460. In addition, convictions for any of the following crimes at any time would be a violation: criminal mistreatment based upon the unlawful manufacture of a controlled substance, child neglect, one, racketeering, use of a minor in a controlled substance offense, manufacture or delivery of hydrocodone within 1,000 feet of a school, manufacture or delivery of a controlled substance within 1,000 feet of a school, causing another to ingest a controlled substance, application of a controlled substance to the body of another person, or felony driving under the influence of intoxicants. Subsection F makes it a requirement of the person or entity to keep the real and personal property tax accounts current for the business for which the, the business is the taxpayer. Subsection G states that the business may not be operated as a home occupation in any zone. Subsection H, no minors are allowed on the business premises. And subsection I, consumption of medical marijuana is not allowed on the business premises. And specifically, the business must comply with the Oregon Indoor Clean Air Act that prohibits indoor tobacco smoking, and the business may not be co-located with a tobacco-smoking lounge, or any medical marijuana social club where medical marijuana is consumed. Section nine states essentially that there are no permit creates any vested or nonconforming Section 10 states that violations of the ordinance may be enforced through the enforcement ordinance, or by seeking administrative, injunctive, or other judicial relief, or may be deemed a public nuisance and abated as such. Section 11 deals with denials or revocations of permits. Subsection A states that an application may be denied unless an applicant satisfies all of the application requirements and the regulations. Subsection B states that a permit may be revoked if the, if the person or entity issued the permit fails to satisfy the application requirements and regulations at any time after the issuance of the permit, and the unsatisfied application requirement or regulation cannot be remedied within the time specified in the notice of revocation sent to the person or entity. Subsection C states that a permit may be suspended if the person or entity issued the permit fails to satisfy the application requirement or regulation at any time after issuance of the permit, but the unsatisfied application requirement or regulation can be remedied within the time specified in the notice sent to the person or entity. And upon satisfaction of the application requirement or regulation, the notices of suspension will be withdrawn. Section 12 addresses the appeal procedure if a permit is denied, suspended, or revoked. Subsection A states that the appeal must be in writing and filed within 15 days after receipt of the notice. The application is filed with the Marion County Planning Division, and, and a, a fee may be established for, for an appeal. Subsection B sets forth the, what must be stated in the appeal: the name and address of the applicant, or, or permit holder, the proposed or current location of the facility, whether the decision being appealed is a denial, revocation, or suspension, and the reason that the decision is incorrect. The hearings officer hears the appeal within a reasonable period of time after receipt of the appeal, and at least 10 days prior to the hearing, the county mails notice of the time and location of the hearing to the applicant or permit holder. Subsection D states that the hearings officer determines the, determines whether the applicant or permit holder satisfies the application requirements and regulations in the chapter on the basis of the written statement and any additional evidence presented at the hearing. At the hearing, the, the applicant may present testimony and oral argument personally or by counsel, and the planning division may likewise appear with or without counsel. The planning division may present testimony and oral argument personally or with counsel, and the burden of proof is on the planning division by a preponderance of the evidence. The hearings officer issues a written decision within a reasonable period of time, and the, and the written decision is final. An appeal of the hearings officer decision would be by writ of review under ORS Chapter 34. Section 13 states that any fees which are created by this ordinance may be set by board order, and Sections 14 and 15 are the severability clause and the declaration of emergency for, for this ordinance. And if the board has any questions, we'd be happy to entertain them.
Gloria first.
I would like to just follow up on a few of the specific points and criteria in the ordinance in relation to some of the comments. First was a suggestion that the board renamed the permit from the ban exemption permit to a facility permit. This is kind of a form over substance. The board originally had looked at this concept as the medical marijuana dispensary ordinance, and has kind of gone back and forth in terms of what do you call it? The intent with the, the ban and the ban exemption permit is that under the current state of the law, a facility does not have to come into local government for any kind of acknowledgement, approval, regulation. And perhaps that will be changed if Senate Bill 1531, and I do apologize, I understand I was transposing numbers on House Bill 3640 as opposed to 3460. So, but that Senate bill would allow an ordinance that provides for regulations, and so, yeah, maybe you could call it something different. But again, that's kind of a form over substance in terms of what it's called. Some specifics in terms of the criteria in Section 8 that I'd like to just discuss briefly. Section 8B, that's the provision to comply with all federal, state, or local laws applicable to the business. And there was concern that a comment made from Mr. Berger that, well, these facilities can't comply with federal law. This is our problem. This is, this is the conflict. However, to the extent that the state is saying that the Controlled Substance Act will not be enforced, as well as the fencing will not be enforced against the medical marijuana facilities, then that would not necessarily be a prohibitive provision for this ordinance. Because that's the whole reason for this ordinance, is that state law is recognizing something that the federal law does not. For provision, Section 8C, the daycare provision, and I have had discussions with Mr. Os about this, and I've also had some discussions, as mentioned, with Mr. Berger as well. And the, the concern with that is that because anyone can open up a daycare, get a $45 permit, that they would basically be chased from location to location. And the, that's kind of the lack of certainty that these facilities are still going to face because of the fact that this is not necessarily something that has been fully recognized under state and federal law. Nonenforcement does not necessarily mean that it is permitted or lawful. It just means they're not going to enforce it, and it puts it in a kind of a second-class position in terms of uses and priority of uses. But there was a, a suggestion made that for the daycare, the board could consider it limiting it to a daycare that had a certain number of children that were present on the daycare, as opposed to just a one or two. So that was a suggestion that had been made regarding the daycare, other than the comment that you heard today that suggested you would not be able to do that. It would seem to be a reasonable place restriction. It certainly is something that has been considered in other states, and is included in their laws, as well as a lot broader list of facilities where children and minors are present. For Section 8... For Section eight H, no minors on the premises. There was some discussion about a separate waiting room or something like that. You know, if that is distinct from the medical marijuana premises, the actual storefront premises, I mean, that's something that's possibly workable. It's how you define the premises. And that would not be inconsistent. The one provision that might be preempted, in part, is Section eight I, as it relates to employees. There is an employee exception in House Bill thirty-four sixty, which is only for allowing an employee with a card to be able to use medical marijuana on the premises so long as it's in a separate room with separate ventilation and some other conditions and requirements. So to the extent that this is a working condition or an employment law, there may need to be an exception, an employee exception. Now, that does not require employers to do that. That's been pretty clear in the Emerald Steel case. But the state law does allow at least that option for employees only. The restriction could still apply to all other customers, clients, visitors of the facility. And with that, if there are any other questions?
Just three or four, I'm sure.
Well, I crossed off a couple.
Okay.
Did you want to go first?
Well, Gloria had just touched on Section eight. There was, you've talked a little bit about no minors allowed on the business premises. And I have in front of me, which has been a great resource, the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program. This is put out by the Oregon Health Authority. And in here, they, what I'm looking at, "Administration of Medical Marijuana May Not Take Place in a Public Place As Defined O R S, or in the Presence of a Person Less Than Eighteen Years of Age." I understand that there are individuals who are under eighteen years of age who use marijuana. So if that's clarity that is being looked for, that a user who happens to be under eighteen is going into the facility, I think there's something to purchase or...
There could be an exception for, for under subsection eight H, there could be an exception for, to the effect of unless the minor is a cardholder.
Right, something along that line.
And accompanied by a parent or guardian.
Well, and see, I have a question, too. I don't know the answer to is, are persons under eighteen years of age able to purchase if they are a card... See, so you get into that. So I'm thinking we're better off that there aren't minors, because you're going to have an adult then purchasing for the user who's under eighteen. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, unlike tobacco, there isn't an age limit for medical marijuana, and it's because the person has to be a cardholder regardless of the age. So it's really about them being on the premises. And some premises say no one under eighteen, we heard that comment. Others, it could be something like an OLCC facility where the person has to be accompanied by an adult, accompanied by a parent or a guardian. Those are options the board could consider.
I just think that's one area that could use some clarity for that. Okay. All right. That was the only question I had at the moment.
Go ahead.
Okay, I have a list here, which I crossed off, too, after Gloria's presentation. Thank you both for the very detailed overview, and thank you for the findings. I read through them last night, and very thorough job. And you gave me a bibliography today that I asked for, and very much appreciate that, too. So you already talked about the facility versus ban exemption permit, and I, too, thought it was a bit more semantics than substance. Nonpermitted use in EFU. This is a, so one of the things that, and I'll talk more about this in my final comments, is that while we're calling this a ban permit with an exemption, it really is becoming more of a regulating marijuana, medical marijuana facilities ordinance. And so while we say that we're banning, the only place that we're banning medical marijuana dispensaries, really, is in the exclusive farm use, farm forest zone. And one of my questions is, and maybe Joe needs to help with this, too, is that in fifteen thirty-one, we are allowed to regulate time, manner, and place. And assuming that that moves forward in the Second Chamber, that would be allowed under state law and not just kind of suggested under, you know, the various laws that we've looked at. So do we not permit use in the exclusive farm use zone for other things? And I think the answer is obviously yes. Would this lack of permission really be considered a ban if local governments aren't allowed to ban? Or would it also be considered just a nonpermitted use in a particular area? Do you get what the question I'm asking? So, and Joe, you look like you have an answer, and Scott looks like he would love to have you come and help answer it.
If I could maybe start out, the farm and forest zones generally are very restrictive as to what uses can be allowed. Generally, it is farm uses and uses in conjunction with farm use on farm ground which are allowable.
Right. And I guess, just to restate my question, I've heard today people saying, well, you can't ban this at all because the state law is not allowing the ban. That part was taken out of fifteen thirty-one. And therefore, when you say that you're banning it in the farm and forest zone, that's not okay, and the state law allows us to have this in agricultural zones. And my contention is, but we don't allow all kinds of things in the farm and forest zone under existing state law and under local code. And so I just wanted to just explore that a little bit in terms of whether or not, in your view legally and from a land use perspective, whether or not, even if fifteen thirty-one doesn't allow us to ban, it's legally permissible for us to say it's not permitted in this zone.
We've had discussions with legal counsel about this item. When we apply the zone code, we look at the use that comes in, we go through our code and determine where it falls, whether it's a permitted use or a conditional use. If the code does not specifically address it, then it's not allowed. In a case like this, where medical marijuana dispensaries are not defined, we would look at a similar use. In this case, I think we've talked about it and have decided that it's very similar to a pharmacy. And so we would look at zones that allow pharmacies, and those are the same zones that we would apply the pharmacy standard to the medical marijuana dispensaries. Therefore, it's not, pharmacies are not allowed in a residential zone. They're not allowed in a commercial office. So those, they're not allowed in the EFU zone. So it would have to be a zone that allows a pharmacy in order for someone to comply with the zone.
Thank you. Okay, and that, I had actually a pharmacy-type business, a little bit of explanation on that, so you've given that. So there was also a question that was discussed in passing about someone not, needing more information on what a home occupation is. So could you, Joe, describe briefly what a home occupation is and how that would relate to a medical marijuana dispensary?
A home occupation is a business that you conduct, a person conducts out of their home. There are size restrictions, there's no visits by customers and suppliers, there are different standards that apply to having a home business. They're generally almost exclusively in the residential zone or in a farm zone. Commercial zones generally don't need a home occupation, even if they have a dwelling in conjunction with the business, because the business is already allowed in that zone. So it's a special use that's allowed under certain circumstances.
So if someone's home, so obviously, we're not allowing this in residential, and I don't think the state law allows it in residential. So that's not even an issue we're arguing about. But say, someone has a home out in the agricultural area and/or in a mixed-use area, and probably mixed-use would be better, because we're saying that agriculture's not permitted. And so my understanding of home occupations is, it's generally just one or one person, maybe it's family members, so it's like there's a cap in terms of how many can be involved. We've had massage therapists that people come to their home, people that might have a beauty salon where, right, where they do people's hair. We had a cookie business that got a little bit too big that we worked on. So these are the types of businesses that people would have in their homes. So we're saying that a medical marijuana dispensary really doesn't meet the definition of a home business, and there could be issues that evolve if we start treating it like a home business.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Anything, Scott, you'd want to add to that?
No, that...
Okay, I wanted to address, I had this listed, the thousand feet from the childcare Head Start, and Gloria, you addressed that there are other states where marijuana actually is legal. There are provisions in, that you've seen, that are, that expand beyond what the Oregon state law is, which is just an elementary secondary school. We're actually talking about childcare centers, Head Start, that type of thing. I just wanted to add, and I'm not an expert on this, but I know a little bit about it, that a childcare facility, as regulated under O R S, I think it was three twenty-nine, many childcares that are in homes, like we were just talking about, that are smaller, when you're talking about only a few people, are not really regulated. They are, they register, but there's not an enforcement. Really, it's the larger centers that are regulated. So I'm, and they actually, there are licensed childcare centers, and then there are unlicensed childcare centers. And so one of the things that we might want to do is just say here where it says, if you're concerned about that, where was that section? There it is.
That would be, that's Section eight C.
Right. Yeah, you could say, or a licensed childcare facility regulated pursuant to O R S. I mean, that's just a suggestion. And I'm a little wary of putting it in today when we haven't done enough research on it, but it might be an option. Talked about no consumption on the business premises. Are you suggesting that on these, that we would actually add language or change language on that today? So no consumption of medical marijuana is allowed on the business premises unless otherwise allowed by state law, something like that? Is that what you're thinking of? Because card...
That's correct.
The employees, you were saying, could...
I would want to reference, narrowly reference, the provision, and it would be somewhere in Chapter, O R S Chapter four seventy-five, that refers to the employee exception, not as broad as otherwise authorized by law, because that gets into just any cardholder as opposed to the employee exception.
Okay. I wanted to also get a little clarity, and Walt, since you have so kindly been here for a few hours and fifteen minutes, about felony DUI. There was a comment about that. It's in the, when someone has a background check in that section, so it would be Section eight E, and it would be, it's the last phrase right before F. Or felony driving under the influence of intoxicants. So there was a comment that was made that that was, I think, unacceptable or whatever. Can you describe, under what circumstances, someone is convicted of a felony DUI? So what that means, and from your perspective, why that might be a concern in a background check?
Well, Commissioner Berentino, Commissioner Carlson, my name's Walt Egglaw, Marion County District Attorney. I guess the starting point is that the specific crimes listed in this provision of Section eight E are, were looked at in terms of the O R S Criminal Code for Oregon, and had each had a strong and direct nexus between that Oregon conviction and the federal priorities that were listed in the announcement by the Attorney General. As you go through those, most of those relate directly to connections to children, which is one of those priorities. The felony DUI requirement, although I didn't actually devise personally this list, requires prior convictions of felony to the point where those misdemeanor convictions create a level felony conviction. And I think I would have to get out the list of federal priorities to draw that actual nexus, but our staff felt that that clearly fell within those parameters. So again, I would want to get out, to answer your question very clearly, get out the Criminal Code, and I can certainly provide that kind of foundation between that felony conviction and the particular priorities, if you wish.
No, I think you answered my question, because it says that a person would be denied, I mean, that wouldn't pass the background check if they've been convicted of any of the following crimes at any time. And so when you read, "driving under the influence of intoxicants," I mean, I thought, well, is, you know, is that a felony? And you're telling me it actually is, like, a first time would be a misdemeanor. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, so the, being convicted at any time of a felony, driving under the influence of intoxicants, means that someone multiple times has been convicted of the, more than once, at least.
That is correct, Commissioner Carlson. And in fact, under Oregon law, the first one is a misdemeanor, and you're allowed a diversion under Oregon law, and that ultimately, if you complete the terms of that, that charge is ultimately dismissed, and therefore, your second DUI is a misdemeanor. So you actually, under Oregon law, get kind of get of a first treatment-oriented approach under Oregon law, and then you start counting those predicate misdemeanor convictions. So clearly, the felony conviction under Oregon law, which we've supported for years, shows that almost consistent, repetitive violation of Oregon law for driving under the influence of intoxicants, and therefore, that is reflected in that particular C felony.
And from my understanding, too, people that drive under the influence aren't always caught, so when you're caught that first and second and third time, there's probably, it's probably not the only times you've been doing that, so...
Commissioner Carlson, I think if you looked at national studies, I think they would bear that out. That's a reasonable assessment to conclude.
Okay. Thank you. I really appreciate that. Two more questions, if you'll bear with me. There's a section about, this is on, in Section twelve, okay, twelve A, and it says that if someone files an appeal, it would be filed at Planning Division accompanied by a non-refundable appeal fee. And Scott, I thought, I heard you say that that fee would be set up, but I'm just wondering, don't we already have a non-refundable appeal fee? Or would there have to be one that's created for this particular permit process?
There would be, there would be a fee set up for this process. And Section thirteen states that fees that are called for in this ordinance are to be set by board order.
Joe, can you help me with this? Because my understanding of how we do appeals in planning is that there's a schedule of fees, and that the fees that are set up in Section thirteen would be the fees to actually apply for the exemption permit. So I know we have to set that up, and I've heard that two hundred fifty dollars is the preferable amount. Someone said that several times. So I picked that up, but I'm just wondering if this, so this is the fee that if someone gets denied an application and they don't pass the background check, or they don't conform with all of the application requirements, or they already have a permit, and then something happens, there's an incident where law enforcement gets involved, or something else, and their permit is either suspended or revoked, they want to go to the board and say, or they want to go to the hearings officer and say, "We don't agree with this decision of the county to either deny our permit in the first place or to take it away." And in that instance, they're going through this process we talked about before, where they go before a hearings officer. Now, I thought that those fees were pretty much already scheduled for appeals.
It is with the zone code. I'm not sure it would apply to this ordinance directly.
Okay.
If someone appeals...
And so, so in the zone code, something like this, do we, can you give us a sense, ballpark sense of what someone would pay if they were filing an appeal?
Yes. If the planning director issues a decision... If a planning director issues a decision, the appeal fee to, for an opponent or the applicant to take that to the hearings office, there is $250.
Okay, that's $250, all right. So it would be in that realm to do an appeal?
I would assume that would be the program.
Yeah, okay, all right. But you're thinking, Scott, that we would have to set that up because we don't have it specifically for this type of thing because this is new?
And that, yeah, correct. And this is not a, a land use ordinance.
Okay. So even though it would go to the Planning Division, it's not a land use ordinance?
Correct.
Just, you got the short straw, huh? All right, very good. And then I guess the last question then is, when are you all planning to bring forward those fees? Because generally, we have them pretty close together in terms of when we approve an ordinance if there are fees involved. Would that be within the next week or two, or what's your sense of that?
I think that that could be done in the next week or two. It depends on exactly what, exactly what is adopted and how much work it's going to require. Are we going to have to do site visits to properties and make sure there isn't something within a certain distance that doesn't show up somewhere, those kinds of things.
All right, great. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Other questions?
Well, I do have one then. It's, we've got rather a list that we sound like ought to all agree on change, and you've just gone over them, Commissioner Carlson, but I've tried to, clearing up, and I, yes, I had listed my, my preference and to see what goes. First, I heard Gloria talk about renaming to it like a facility permit, so I'd want to change and say just that or something like it. I heard Commissioners Carlson talked about a licensed daycare, and also Gloria talking about a number, I don't know. I think if you have the permit, your license and, and that's the $40 we're hearing about, I arbitrarily pick a number, six, I just throw it out. Seemed like that's a legitimate daycare operation then. And then the two having to do with exemptions, to me, if you're, if you have an employee with a card or under eighteen with a card, it doesn't make a lot of sense to try to exclude things. So do you agree with tho, oh, and then we need to set a fee? Are there others to the list, or where do we go?
I'm not certain with regard to eighteen-year-old, I am not cer, I'm not understanding what you're thinking.
What was the eighteen, what is, I missed it.
On eighteen? Excuse me. On eighteen is that the person under eighteen, if they have a card, I really don't have any problem with them being on the location, the card controls.
So what I'd written down, no minors are allowed unless the minor is a cardholder and accompanied by a parent or guardian. Is that what?
I didn't add that, but they...
Well, I heard, I heard Gloria say that, and I thought that was...
That's what I have.
All right, then that's fine.
All right, and then if I could, I don't, I don't want to pick your number six for the childcare because there are actually specific numbers of children that are allowed by law already in daycare facilities that fall under that licensed or unlicensed.
All right, fine.
So if you have a family daycare, they don't allow you to have more than a certain number. I'd have to go talk to the childcare division to know what that number is, and I don't want us to set up something that puts us in the, you know, like, like maybe it's five and we allow six. I mean, it just would be weird, so I don't want to do that.
I, I wanted to revisit that, too, and I'm thinking along the same lines you are. So language that is consistent with current daycare regulations is what ought to be in here, rather than trying to determine a number. Because I think the intent is there are a variety of types of daycares, whether it's a family, but there are limitations on the number of children. It might be a full-fledged, maybe it's a, it's a chain of daycares, and I don't know what the regulations are regarding that. So if the language is consistent here with that, then I, I'm comfortable with that.
It doesn't sound like we're too far off. I just want to mention my concerns and hope that when we have a motion one way or another, then it would address those.
But I could, let me, let me back up, too, unless this draft I, in front of me, that, again, what we're calling this, in the matter of regulating medical marijuana dispensary facilities, am I looking at the, we've had so many versions of that. That's the one in front of us. So to, to rename it a facility permit is what I'm, is that the...
I'm open to suggestions, if that's what you're looking for.
I, I'm not sure that we need, I'm not sure we need to change that. Do we really need to change that?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, as I said, it's a matter of form over substance. To the extent it was, it'd be changed, we'd be looking at more in the ordinance sections, five and six, kind of the, the titles of those sections, and, and just wherever it would say be an exemption permit, you do a search and replace for facilities permit.
So it'd be a... You're suggesting a facility permit? Commissioner, that was what you suggested?
I was following Gloria's lead, and I understand the key words banned, so whichever way you want to go. If the title's adequate, if the body's different, I don't know.
I think Gloria was actually quoting one of the gentlemen that testified today who suggested facility permit rather than ban exemption permit. And I think it was primarily on the logic that since we are not allowed to ban, at least by the bill that's partially through the legislature, that to call it a ban exemption permit then sets us up to be doing something that we're not allowed to do. I, again, I think it's semantics, but if that's where the board wants to go, I'm not opposed to calling it something different.
I just wanted to clarify that, too. We have in front of us regulating medical marijuana dispensaries and establishing a permit process. And what I think I'm hearing Gloria say is the language in this document then is consistent with that title, that heading. So I'm perfectly comfortable leaving it as such.
All right. Other questions or comments?
Not at the moment. So...
I think I'd like a motion. We don't always do that before we discuss, but let's do that, and then, and then each have an opportunity, and then we'll call a question when that time is appropriate.
Okay, well, Mr. Chair, before I make a motion to move that the chair read the ordinance by title only twice, which would be the first one we would make, I just want to say that as we move through this, in the second motion, I'll be suggesting the revisions that, that we talked about. So by reading the title, we're not necessarily approving everything that's in the body of it, so, but I would move that the chair read this ordinance by title only twice.
I'll second that motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to have the chair read the ordinance by title twice, following our emergency procedures then. And I think we'll go ahead and call a question on that then. Is that agreeable? Any other discussion? Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and I'll do that to move it along to this next point. This is the first reading in the matter of regulating medical marijuana dispensary facilities in the unincorporated area of Marion County, establishing a permit process and declaring an emergency. On the second reading, in the matter of regulating medical marijuana dispensary facilities in the unincorporated area of Marion County, establishing a permit process and declaring an emergency.
And then, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve this ordinance with the following revisions. So then I want to check in and find out what your thought is about the childcare facilities. Does the word licensed work for you? A licensed childcare facility regulated pursuant to ORS Chapters 329 or 329A? What it means is that an unlicensed one is that grandma takes care of grandchild in their home. Now, you can have a licensed childcare facility in a home. People have daycares where they take people out for pay, large numbers of children sometimes. Licensed does mean that. It doesn't mean just the chains.
Right, and, and I, I'm certainly aware of that. All I was looking for is that the language would, would mirror what the state definitions are.
And that would be, that would be the definitions.
Yes, yes.
So maybe it's a state licensed, I don't know. Do you want to?
And that's what I think Gloria probably needs to look at, what that exact...
Can we conceptually then put that in there, and then we can, is that all right, Gloria? And then you can confirm whether state licensed is the language we want to use. It would be that or something similar to it? And the, and the intent is that we are, that these would be childcare facilities that have to register with the state and that they can regulate. It doesn't make any sense to look at all of these various homes all around that may or may not have childcare in them that we don't know about. So that's the first revision. Second revision would be, so that is Section 8C, and then a change to Section 8H, no minors are allowed on the premises unless the minor is a cardholder and accompanied by a parent or guardian. That's what you have, too, Scott, right? And then on Section 8I, and Gloria, or Scott, you want to help me with this, no consumption of medical marijuana is allowed on the business premises unless allowed in ORS Chapter 4...
For employees.
Okay. Unless...
Unless, unless otherwise allowed for employees in ORS Chapter...
Okay, otherwise allowed for employees. And you could say as specified in ORS...
Chapter 475.
Chapter 475. Was there any other area that we talked about that needed adjustment?
Want to clarify the fee, or do we need to?
Well, I think another board order will come forward on the fee schedule because that's how we generally do these, and that would be as they sit in the next week or two. So with those three changes...
I had one other, I'm just not sure how we left it. Maybe it was already changed, and I'm sorry, I don't know, but it hadn't to do with the surety provisions and leaving indemnification. Do we address that in the current document, or does it need to be?
That was taken out, Gloria described, and, and the waivers were put in instead, right?
There's difference between, Mr. Chair Commissioners, the waivers of liability and the indemnification. The waivers of liability is that you're not going to sue the county or its officers for, for this. And that's something that you see the state has given itself in its program, that it's not liable for any action that it takes or it doesn't take. And, and that's a concern, especially with their staffing levels, but basically, it's extending that same waiver of liability. You're not going to bring a claim against the county for anything that we do or don't do, letting you do this. The indemnification provision, that's the one that is kind of a speculative remedy in relation to a speculative concern about contracts and grants and whether or not federal agencies might come after us or require some sort of a payment or civil penalty or fine. And that, I'm not recommending a change to that provision at that, this time. It is one that if it is found to be unreasonable, could be severed under the severability provision.
All I wanted, excuse me, Gloria, is hear that the Section 6 is what you recommend.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, I think we've covered them all then.
Okay, so that's my motion, is to approve the ordinance with those three changes that we've listed.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved, seconded to approve the ordinance with those changes now, or perhaps a discussion period before vote. So are there?
All right, all right. First, I want to thank everybody for being here and participating in this conversation, and I suspect that it's not over yet. As we've commented on, there is legislation going through the legislative process, and it's not finalized yet. We won't know until, as has been mentioned, until it goes through both chambers and the governor signs it, and we don't know yet. We are trying to do the best we can here in Marion County because there is a lot of uncertainty, and this is a very, very complex, convoluted issue because I don't, I'm not going to repeat all the things that have been said this morning, we've all been here long enough, but this conflict between federal and state law, conflicts of what's best for each individual community, conflicts between what the legislature is doing and what we would like to do that we believe is best for our communities. This is, it, it's a discussion, it was an issue that's been out there quite some time, and now it has arisen to much greater public scrutiny and public discussion. And it should be getting a lot of public discussion. We should, absolutely, we should be talking with each other to better understand all of these complicated issues that are a part of this. Many of the stories and information that you've shared and others have shared with us over the last couple of years are very helpful to me in, in looking at what, what we ought to be doing here and what the best solution is. Because this is moving at the moment, what appears to be very, very fast, it, it doesn't give me a lot of comfort. Very likely, we will in time revisit and make adjustments. That's often what happens. I don't want to see lawsuits, I don't want to see community members at odds with each other and angry confrontations. That doesn't help any of us find good solutions, and it certainly doesn't allow us to work together. So we have to continue to talk with each, with each other. It's also been touched on, and it's frustrating to me that, that we have this federal law. As an elected official, we take an oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws thereof, of both the federal, the federal Constitution and, and the state Constitution. And it, it puts me in a conflicting position. It does always boil down to coming up with good solutions for our communities. And if laws need to be changed, then that's the work that the people have the opportunity to be about, and that's part of what's happening here. We do, in this, getting into some of the more particulars that have also been covered very extensively, as county commissioners, our decisions on a regular basis involve making decisions regarding businesses, regarding land use, regarding public safety, regarding livability, issues that affect our communities and what provide opportunities for healthy communities. This is just another one, in effect, of those discussions. And it's also been touched on that we, we do, it's part of our responsibility to regulate, to oversee, and to enforce what happens in our communities and our businesses and relative to land use. So that is our responsibility here, and that's, that's not easy in, in matters like this, but it's what we're charged with doing. I hope, I would just close my comments by saying, we, we want, I want to make sure that, that there is a clear path, that it's not complicated, so that our law enforcement can enforce when necessary, if necessary, that our planning staff can help establish businesses in the appropriate places. That's what we're trying to do here. To, to come up with complicated solutions to complicated problems only worsens the situation. So the questions I've had and what the discussion we've had here on this draft, I, I think we're, we're getting closer to, to making this a little more clear. And the issue of, and I, I appreciate that some of you have commented on, because I made the comment early on in this discussion, this is about medical use of marijuana. And I use that phrase loosely because that's an issue all in itself, and that's, there are a lot of uncertainties there, there's a lot that's not determined, there are a lot of opinions, there are a lot of studies that, that aren't in agreement with each other. And that's an area that really, really needs to be looked at. And if there is a bona fide, and I'm not suggesting anyone here that it's not, but marijuana and the medical use is not out there as are other drugs that doctors prescribe to address different medical conditions. So we have a long, long way to go to, to be there where it's, it's much more clear how, what the substance is, what the dosage is, what it is used to ad... how, what the substance is, what the dosage is, what it is used to address. We have a long, long way to go, and I think that's a discussion that needs to continue to take place. Then on the other end of the spectrum is this issue. There are many, many people who just simply want to open marijuana up to recreational use, and it's kind of a no bar, no bar's hold. So that is of great concern. It's just really important that we tackle each of these aspects individually and continue to talk and work together to, to do what's best for our community.
So I'll just make a few comments. I think that I was not on the board when the gravel quarry issue came before us, but I was watching it on TV, and I think it lasted longer than three hours. So even though we had about as many people here, it wasn't quite as long a hearing. So I just want, a few things I wanted to highlight. First of all, again, I think that if you haven't read the findings that are with this that, and they just came out, you really ought to read them because they are very well done. One of the issues that it starts out right away, it talks about the transparency of the process. And I know people, there have been comments, people being concerned that this kind of came out of the blue, didn't know we were doing it, couldn't find us. This does document that we had work sessions on November 25th and February 10th that we talked about it at management update on January 27th, that there was a community forum on February 11th, that we received public comment on February 5th, 12th, and 19th. And what it doesn't say here is that I know the Public Safety Coordinating Council, at least I saw on the agendas, that they were talking about this and a lot of emails flying around about what the positions were of the, of our law enforcement and public safety officials. Economic Development Advisory Board obviously talked about it and provided a letter. There have been a lot of emails back and forth. We try really hard to get the word out about what we're doing. It's not easy in Salem. We don't have our own TV station. Portland isn't always interested in what we do. We have CCTV, which I use all the time, but it doesn't have necessarily as broad an audience. We do have our website, but unless people know that they should go there, they don't go to look at it. And the, we don't have a reporter assigned to the county for, from the Statesman Journal. We haven't had that for a number of years. So they often pick up on things after they happen rather than before they happen. So you have found us now, and we've been together for a few weeks now, but just want to apologize if it felt like you weren't getting the information because we do try to get that out. There is a long section here on federal law. I won't belabor that because we've had a lot of discussion on that this morning. There is just one issue that I wanted to actually read out of this, which was, I was aware of it, but I hadn't thought about it in relationship to this issue. So when it talks about a decision by the U.S. Department of Justice to not enforce criminal laws, does not make medical marijuana lawful under federal law, and goes on to say furthermore, Marion County has entered into federal grants and contracts that include in the required terms and conditions compliance with the Controlled Substances Act. In the award or implementation of these grants and contracts, these agencies are not bound by the U.S. Department of Justice's current position of non-enforcement of federal criminal laws. Contractual remedies against Marion County could include disqualification, non-selection, debarment, fines, penalties, or repayment of federal funds. I know I've been working on the reentry initiative for a number of years. We have large federal grants for that, one that we got recently on co-occurring disorders. We do sign a boatload of paperwork and make promises to the federal government. And the fact that those are put at risk, and I think the most recent one we got was like over $300,000, that, that is a concern. And so having this indemnification language and the waivers and that type of thing, I think are very important. Another thing that I just wanted to put on the record this morning because I thought it was very interesting when I saw it. Oh, a second, in the wrong section here. Ever since I got a new iPhone, I have to put my password.
Is it on Colorado?
No. Okay, here we go. There we go. We, the Board of Commissioners, also operate as the Housing Authority Board. And we had a situation with a client who had a Section 8 voucher, that's a federal voucher to be able to pay on a sliding scale rent. And that person wanted to transfer from an adjacent county to our county. In the process of having an interview, as I understand it, she wasn't asked directly, but she just disclosed voluntarily that she had used medical marijuana within the six, last six months. And she was denied housing in Marion County until she's clean and sober for six months. I, this was in the midst of us having these discussions, and I sent some emails kind of asking, all right, this is medical marijuana, it's legal in Oregon, can we really do this? And so our housing director provided a communication that they have, that she had received that guided this. And it says, "The department has received numerous inquiries regarding the use of medical marijuana." It talks about the states where they've enacted laws. It includes Oregon. It says, "Based on federal law, new admissions of medical marijuana users are prohibited into the public housing," and HCV is the Housing Choice Voucher. So that's the Section 8 programs. Controlled Substances Act lists marijuana as a Schedule I drug, and then it goes on. So she was bound by that federal guidance. And I just say that to show you just how very confusing, another example of a conflict where someone is a medical marijuana cardholder lawfully in Oregon, but not allowed in Marion County public housing as a new resident. Now, if she was already living in public housing and got the medical marijuana card, then it's a different story. So, I mean, go figure. But these are the things that we're dealing with as commissioners every day. We talked about the background checks issue, so I won't go into that again. The, I appreciated the information about the fact that we're looking at this from a zoning perspective like a pharmacy. And I think that's very consistent with the testimony that we've heard from the people that are operating dispensaries, that they want to be treated like a business, that they see this as a business. And so I think that the, that the pharmacy metaphor or model is, is a good one to use as we're thinking through this. And then I do want to reemphasize in the agricultural, the farm zones, exclusive farm use, and we've talked about this before, and we've talked about it a bit today, that there is a great contradiction in state laws, and I'm hoping that someone from the legislature takes note of this, in allowing dispensaries in agricultural lands and yet saying that they can't be in the grow area, which then puts it in direct conflict with all of our state laws and our codes around land use, particularly that if we're going to have a business in agricultural land, it has to be, if it's commercial, it has to be in conjunction with the farm use. It has to be like, as we talked about, the, the pies and the jellies. If you have a berry farm or at a winery, that it has to be, even if you have a wedding, you're featuring the wine. And here we're saying that it can be there, but it can't be anywhere near there. So I think that our, that this ordinance not permitting these dispensaries in agricultural lands keeps us in, very much in the safe harbor, if you will, for what the other state laws require for us to do in exclusive farm use land, and it makes a lot of sense. So again, I appreciate all the work that everyone has done to get us to this place. I recognize this is a very controversial, controversial issue. My perceptions of the testimony have been that they're heartfelt, that people have strong, very strong opinions about this. That is not lost on me. I'm hoping this has really moved, I mean, we've really shifted this from being a, talking about banning to talking about regulating. And I think that from what we've heard from most of the people that have testified that they are not adverse to regulation, understanding that other businesses are regulated, I think these are reasonable regulations, given all of the predicaments that we're in with trying to navigate this state, federal, local law conundrum that we're in. And I will be supportive of the ordinance as we've amended it today.
All right, thank you. I've overlooked both the sheriff and district attorney. If you really wanted to say something, I'd ask that you don't, but whatever you want to do. Excuse me for the rudeness of going by that. Real quickly for myself, I'm kind of struggling with what I say. I, I note from the paper this morning, I didn't understand it, Bill Hansel, State Senator from Athena, old friend of mine, actually, County Commissioner Yumatilla, who had advised me early on in, in conversations that I need to explain myself. And it's so easy just to say yes, no, and move on, and it's, it's a lot safer, too. So I'm still kind of struggling with that. Turns out, he's kind of behind this. I have trouble understanding that and haven't talked to him about it. But I will make a couple of comments, and, and I think I'll be catching some of Commissioner Carlson's that we, we disagree, we see things different. You all will say he didn't listen to me, and that won't ever be the truth. I, I certainly listened. I understand that there's some people that get relief from this, but I still can't buy the process and want to do my best to limit its availability in Marion County. Just a couple of points, again, try to take it for this is just Sam, he doesn't know anything. I heard statements that it's not addictive. Well, I ran a business. I watched employees that couldn't keep their jobs, lost respect of their families. I frankly had to fire them even after the counseling and time that we set up for them. And if they're not addicted, they certainly couldn't bypass the compulsion to use the product in spite of the better. We've seen it in public figures, sports figures won recently. Oregon State person gave up opportunity to play in, in the Super Bowl because he couldn't stay away from it. It was brought up to a snow death. Well, it's from overdose, it's always qualified. I don't have any information, but I can't believe there hasn't been deaths and injuries from driving. I've been, it was said that it's not a gateway. Well, my personal experience again says it is a gateway. I've watched people change from using marijuana and watched the lack of incentive and change in personality and effects of the family. Then we get into the part that's medical. I just watched this morning on a report in, in Colorado, and they were showing these people producing this material. Just because you put medical on it, that doesn't make it medicine. They had a special drink they were putting out there. It'd be like me putting on my Guinness that it's medical and it's probably all right. Well, it's not medical. It might make my day go better, but it's not medicine. So bottom line, I think others have said, I believe it's all a flaunting of the laws and rules to have a de facto recreational legalization. So I think in this ordinance, I ask that it come forward and meets the requirement. I hope it works, that it'll be litigated, I'm fully aware, and I hope it stands up. And then we also get the threats about elected, it's just me. I'm elected to represent and protect Marion County, and that's what I'm going to do, and I won't do anything that facilitates, associate with, or promote something that I feel is wrong. So on subject or not, those are my feelings and drivers, and that's what you have. So any other questions, discussion? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Can I take a short break?
We will take a short break. It is almost noon time. People are still working in adjacent rooms, but we'll try to get back here in like five minutes. And I know we've got some people, and I apologize, that probably have to get on a plane, but maybe you'll be shorter than we are. All right, let's adjourn until noon. All right, we're back to deal with our, continue on our action agenda, schedule this morning agenda. We're on the consideration of approval of the 2014 federal agenda. Wonder if we could close the door there, please? Thank you. Barb Young, Marion County Government Relations. Joel Rubin, Julie Crockett from CFM Strategic Communications. So Barb, are you going to begin this?
Yes, I'll get us started. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Barb Young, Government Relations Manager for Marion County. We've been working hard with our elected officials and our department heads and even the folks up the San Yam Canyon to bring to you our 2014 federal agenda for your consideration today. Today, we're also fortunate to have our DC team here to present. It will be a quicker presentation as they need to be in Eugene at 1:00 today. They will go back and talk a little bit about our accomplishments from 2013, our future agenda items for 2014, and a little bit about the political climate currently in Washington, DC. With that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you so much, Barb. Thank you, Commissioners, for the time, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here and the privilege to represent you in our nation's capital. You know, it's interesting listening to the discussion for the last couple of hours, and it's a little surprising to me, being in DC for the last 14 years, that the federal government hasn't been able to provide clarity on an issue. So that's something new that we don't hear very often. I know you're struggling with these types of issues, and other states around the country are, are struggling with these issues, too. But the federal government sometimes doesn't speak with one voice, and it's especially true on that complicated issue. But like Barb mentioned, Julie and I are here to talk about some of your successes, the comprehensive approach to our lobbying style, some of the post-sequestration slash sequestration light budget world that we're living in, and take a look at your 2014 federal agenda and look quickly ahead towards what the future holds for, for the rest of 2014. I may go a little bit faster than normal just because of some of the time constraints we have going down to Eugene, but I wanted to briefly mention a couple of the real big successes we've had over the years, over the last five years, securing $11.5 million in grant and earmark funding at about a $1.64 million return on investment. Helping, it's more about, more than just return on investment, though, obviously, it's taking care of some of these meth facilities and cleaning them up. You have a world-renowned reentry program that is recognized back in Washington, DC as one of the top programs in the country. And then, of course, taking care of some of your infrastructure challenges with the Woodburn Interchange, the North Fork Road, and some of the infrastructure challenges that you all have here. Those continually are part of your federal agenda, and we've been successful in the past at working together and secure some funding and working with your congressional delegation and the federal agencies to, to secure some federal resources as well. Some successes from last year, as Commissioner Carlson mentioned, that you've received a couple of high-profile grants from the Department of Justice, nearly $600,000 for co-occurring substance abuse and mental health disorders, $350,000 for the adult drug court for the veterans treatment docket. Some of the bigger policy successes, and again, excuse me for going a little bit quicker than I normally would, but as, as everything in Washington, DC is kind of under a lot of fiscal and financial pressure with budgets, one of the things that you all have been able to successfully access is the Second Chance Act funding, and that's been very helpful in your reentry initiative. That account was under a lot of pressure, and we were able to get the Oregon delegation behind and a lot of the appropriations committee members behind supporting Second Chance Act. And it was actually increased 5.7% from 2013 in the FY14 budget. One of the things, the good things about having lobbyists on the ground in, in Washington, DC is we can act on a moment's notice. This next issue, working with the Aurora Airport, an issue came to our attention on September 25th of 2013, that FAA had been trying to and was about to shut down night flights in and out of the Aurora Airport on September 30th, three business days later, five real day, five real days later. And the federal government was about to shut down that sixth day on October 1st because the government shut down for 15 days. We were contacted by the county. We, they said, "This can't happen." A lot of local airport users were about to, if, if night flights were canceled, they were going to remove their assets from the airport, costing hundreds of thousands of dollars in local economic impact, jobs, and really turning, turning back the progress that's been happening at Aurora Airport in terms of the economy. Within minutes or days, we worked very closely with Representative Schrader's office, Schrader's office working closely with the FAA to really make sure that they understand, you know, those bureaucrats don't necessarily understand all of the local issues that, that are impacting communities. And Congressman Schrader personally and his staff stepped up to make sure that they understood the consequences of this potential ban on night flights. And within three business days, after the Oregon Aviation Department had been trying to fix this for six months, it took Congressman Schrader three days to fix this problem. And, and it was fortunate, it was able to happen because the government did shut down on October 1st, and this wouldn't have been resolved up to two months after that. So it was a, it was a big win for the county, a big win for the airport. And we appreciate your input and, and, and the Congressman's help in that. Extending secure rural schools, that was included again through 2014. That's obviously a big item for the county in coming up to close to $2 million in resources. The, the omnibus appropriations bill passed in early January of this year and offset a lot of the sequestration cuts and really took care of a lot of the programs that the county is interested in and that we're, we talking about a little bit more when we, we look at your 2014 agenda. But protecting CDBG, protecting the cops program, the AFG, Assistance to Firefighters Program, Tiger, EPA, EDA, a lot of the things that municipal governments and a lot of things in Marion County rely on to facilitate some economic development or take care of some local issues. And then the House has passed the bipartisan ONC lands proposal with DeFazio, Schrader, and Walden, and the Senate, Senator Wyden has recently introduced an ONC lands proposal, and that is, had a hearing a couple of weeks ago, and we expect action here shortly in the Senate, and hoping that the House bill and the Senate bill can come together in some, and accomplish- And hoping that the House bill and the Senate bill can come together in some, in a conference committee and provide relief to a lot of the struggling rural counties in Oregon. I'll skip over the comprehensive approach. I think you all know that we, we aren't just doing one thing. We're not just doing grants. We're not just doing legislation. We kind of, you know, we're doing everything in this post earmark world where you have to be talking to all of the agencies, talking to the members of Congress, getting them out here to the county, seeing your projects and getting their staff out here as well. In terms of your 2014 federal agenda, I think you all have all, have seen and gone over the agenda. We break it down into grant requests and to policy initiatives. We continue to have the reentry initiative on there. And I don't, Julie, if you want to mention a couple.
So as Joel mentioned, the reentry initiative is just widely supported at the congressional level as well as in the federal level. In 2012, Marion County was one of seven sites selected for a demonstration project, but that money will be exhausted in September 2014. So right now, we're looking for ways to rework the project, refocus it. We're looking at grants through the Bureau of Justice Assistance or the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration. We're looking at opportunities so that we can support that initiative so that it can continue and do the good work that you're doing.
The next item, the $15 million for the North Canyon Economic Distress Plan, there's a bit of history to this and I'll try to be brief. But in 1996, Congress passed a public lands wilderness and scenic areas bill where they took 35,000 acres out of county land and they basically federalized it. But they also, at the same time, promised that they would provide some economic development assistance to the region because they were taking out land from potentially taxable use or economic development use. That $15 million promise is a promise that hasn't been kept by the federal government. And throughout the late 90s, early 2000s, the governor, the governor's office was in charge of putting together an economic development plan, working with the local elected officials and council of governments to put together a plan to focus on water infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, and other brownfield sites and look at ways of cleaning up and facilitating economic development growth. That plan was put together, submitted in 2000, put together between 2000, 2002, submitted to the federal government, but it just sat there. And until recently, we haven't heard too much about it, but people started asking questions. Well, where is this $15 million and what's being done about it? So we're really reviving and making sure that the federal delegation understands that there was a promise made. It hasn't been kept. And that we are, we are updating the economic development plan. The county is taking the lead on this. And we're putting together a project-based, a project list that the federal government can look at and hopefully fund. The likelihood of getting the full $15 million, to be honest with you, is probably not good in this budget environment, but I think there is, there are opportunities here. And it's not just focusing on the authorization and appropriations. I don't want to get too much in the weeds. But there are also existing federal pots of money through US Department of Agriculture, Department of Commerce, and Environmental Protection Agency where they have funds of money that we're going to get everyone together this spring, once the plan has been completed by the county. Have Congressman Schrader, the senators' offices involved and talk with all the federal agencies to see what kind of resources can be steered toward the North Canyon region.
And then next on the agenda is continuing support for the mental health court. As you know, this is dependent on grant money and right now you only support insured individuals. So we want to look for ways to expand it to uninsured populations. So we're again looking at grants through the Bureau of Justice Assistance and the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration. In addition, the replacement of the jail records management system. You currently, there's currently pots of money for that, but it's very small funding amounts. There's the Burn Formula Funds and the Burn JAG Competitive Grant Funds. Unfortunately, the COPS technology program has not been funded in the past couple of years. So we're going to be advocating for Congress to put money back into that fund, program as well as to support the Burn JAG competitive grant funding so that you will have an opportunity to compete for those funds as well.
And then moving on to your policy initiatives, it's consistent with some of the things that were on your 23, 2013 list is the ONC lands proposal that's moving through both the House and the Senate. Making sure that there's something that actually gets done this year. I think this is the year for a proposal to get through both chambers and be signed by the President. Second Chance Act funding reauthorization is up and we're looking to get broad bipartisan support for, within the Oregon delegation and elsewhere to support the reauthorization. That's basically the funding stream for the Second Chance Act and your reentry initiatives.
And a piece of legislation has been introduced in both the House and the Senate for that. Since it's been expired, it's just been annually appropriated, but this would authorize $100 million for each fiscal year from 2014 to 2018. So it does have strong bipartisan support. We're working to hopefully get that through committee and try to get that passed too.
Secure rural schools authorization, still providing that safety net for, for some of the more rural areas in Oregon. And I'll just highlight a couple of these other items. The transportation reauthorization bill is set to expire September 30th. Our gas tax, highway gas tax fund is set to run out of money in August. So the Congress needs to act on something this year. Basically, the Highway Trust Fund has been bleeding resources because the gas tax hasn't been increased since 1993 and the cost of projects have been going up without the additional revenues to pay for some of those projects. So the Congress will need to act in some way, shape, or form on the transportation reauthorization bill this year. We're hoping that they provide robust funding for highways and transit funding in 2014. And then supporting some of the programs that will help your projects, your grant projects that go above. The COPS program, the CDBG, Tiger, EDA, EPA, all of those programs are those that complement nicely your grant projects. And then waste energy development, making sure that there, there is a, there's a credit applied to your Cavanta facility here in the county. So you all receive credit for that and are, actually aren't penalized for doing the right thing when it comes to clean energy. And then protecting municipal bonds. Municipal bonds has actually been something that cities and counties have used for nearly 100 years now. And that's been threatened over the last couple of budget cycles by some administration, Obama administration proposals. Real quick, I, these are kind of big picture items. We are, I guess the big, the takeaway here is we're making progress, but we still have a 17 point, nearly $3 trillion federal debt. Annually, our budgets have gone down from 1.4 trillion dollars, 1.4 trillion, that's amazing. $1.4 trillion a year in 2009 and last year was a little over 600 billion. Projections have those numbers coming down even further, closer to $500 billion, maybe even lower than that this year. Primarily because of sequestration, so domestic spending cuts, and also because of some tax increases that were part of the fiscal cliff negotiations where they raised taxes on folks that make more than $450,000 a year. Overall trends are, I guess they're going in the right direction, but there's a lot more, a lot more to do. And here's where we spend all of our money at the federal level. Nearly 75% of it goes to Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, military. And you add interest on the debt and veterans benefits and they, so the field that municipal governments operate in is even, it's probably 12% to 8% of the federal government. So that's kind of the area that we specialize in and operate in and what we're fighting for. So when folks, and the reason I bring this up is when folks talk about sequestration, 50% of the cuts happen on that 12% and the other 50% for the most part happened on the military side. So you're taking a 50% hit on only 8% of the budget, which is not sustainable in the long run. And we're starting to face discretionary spending levels that are close to the 1940s and 1950s as a percentage of GDP. In terms of our legislative outlook, it's actually been January, February have been relatively productive for such a dysfunctional Congress. In 2013, it was the least effective Congress in over 60 years in terms of passing legislation. And I think that was borne out in some of the government shutdown fights and, and the debt limit fights that we've had for the last year. But they passed an FY14 omnibus bill, first time they've done that since, the first time they passed appropriations bill since 2009. We've basically been on autopilot for the most part since 2009. Farm bill just recently passed and the debt limit was just increased through March of 2015. So we won't have to deal with that again before the 2014 elections. Couple items that are pending, the transportation reauthorization bill, like I mentioned, the water resources bill. And the administration is, is pending approval of that pipeline, the oil pipeline between the Alberta tar sands and going down to New Orleans. In terms of congressional gridlock, there's still plenty of that. The immigration reform that everyone thought was going to happen after President Obama won in 2012 is still on the shelf. We still don't see anything happening in 2014 on that. Gun control, there was some momentum after the Newtown shootings, but that slowed down pretty quickly. Climate change, there hasn't been really any legislative action items. The administration's trying to do some things on their own. Comprehensive tax reform, as you all probably know, Senator Wyden just took over as Chair of the Finance Committee, the most, one of the most powerful, I'd say the top two powerful committees in the Senate. And Senator Wyden has rededicated himself to tax reform. But most people recognize that nothing's going to happen in 2014, but he's going to be setting the stage for 2015. And then long-term deficit reduction plan, we are in the business of kicking the can down the road. So long-term isn't in the vernacular in Washington DC this year, maybe next year. The government shutdown in October really changed the calculus of what's going on and is part of the reason why things are working a little bit better than they were in 2013. I think the Republicans realized one thing that they got blamed for the shutdown, but also that they have a very good issue to run on in 2014 and that's Obamacare. And every week you see something in the newspapers that is, is putting the Democrats on the defensive. Sorry to get a little political here, but that's kind of how this is breaking down legislatively. Is that I think the, the reason we got an omnibus bill, the reason we got a debt limit agreement is I think the Republicans are feeling pretty good about their chances for elections in 2014. That they didn't want to put up as much of a fight on that and Democrats didn't either because I felt, Democrats felt like they got a lot of the blame as well. So they kind of feel like they're trying to work together. The Republican Party's having an internal battle between the old guard, Senator McCain and Senator Ted Cruz from Texas. And those fights are going to be borne out over the next couple of months and they're trying to get more unity in their party as well. Afghanistan and Iran, both international issues could change the story of what's happening in DC. Afghanistan, we're supposed to be pulling out all of our troops this year, this summer. And Iran, we're under, we're having discussions about their nuclear stockpiles and turning off their nuclear development options and then giving them, relieving them of some of the sanctions. We'll see how that plays out over the next couple of months. Oregon leadership, like I mentioned, Senator Wyden is the new Chair of the Senate Finance Committee. And Jeff Merkley, Senator Merkley, has been appointed Appropriations Committee, which is typically a very powerful committee, but not so much without the earmarks, but it's still powerful in terms of directing federal spending. So Oregon's in a pretty good position, better position than they've been in, in probably since 1995, 1996. In terms of leadership and, and what that could mean in terms of resources and focus back on the state of Oregon. And there's always an election around the corner, November 2014. I think the productivity of this Congress will probably continue for the next couple of months, but then everyone's going to turn towards the November elections. And it's, it's rare, but it happens that there's some sort of broad compromise late in the election year. Like welfare reform happened, for example, in 1996. This is my last slide. Basically, this is how I feel when, when I'm looking at what we do in Washington DC is that there's, I feel pretty good right now, but I'm not sure about what's right around the corner. And we just got past fiscal cliff. We get past the government shutdown. We get past the debt limit. But who knows? Congress is pretty good at putting a cloud over the economy or making some silly decisions. So I'm hopeful, but I'm not, I'm always looking around the corner at potential problems that could, could arise. So with that, again, I'm sorry for the brevity and probably talking way too fast, but it's been a pleasure working with you all. We look, you know, we appreciate you all making the time and investment. The congressional delegation knows that you all are committed to your federal agenda, which makes our jobs a lot easier. So we really appreciate it.
Questions or comments?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for coming here. It's always great when I go to DC to know that I have a home away from home, if you will. Can have someone to help me figure out where in all of those buildings these different offices are and has the, and really has the connections with the congressional offices to be able to have our message be there not just on the days that I travel there, which won't be this year, but I have in the past, but all year long. And, and it really shows and it's a great partnership. So I just want to thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. This Aurora Airport, all the projects and concerns, those are my issues. Thank you so much for your help. And we're not out of the woods yet, as they say. Thank you.
Joel and Julie, I just, the reason you had to talk fast because you deal with so many things and you deal with them well. And I wanted to, I just got to make that point. We're real happy with the service we get. And I can't let Barb Young go by because I know she's, anytime I go on the, she isn't dealing with Courthouse Square, she's dealing with you. And this, this agenda is a lot of important things. If we come back a year from now and, and see results and the success in that, we will have accomplished a lot. So, I mean, it's an action item to approve it.
Yes, I think it's my turn. I will move for approval of the 2014 federal agenda. And just don't drive too fast on your way to Eugene.
I was going to say, if the sheriff's still out there.
It takes a little more than 35 minutes to get there, so.
I second the motion.
All right, it's been moved. Secondly, we approve the 2014 federal agenda as we've just had described to a St. Flur discussion. Here, if you're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Again, thank you and drive carefully. Next is consider approval of a 10-year lease agreement with Dorothy Rush Nolan and Alita Marie Steyer, co-trustees of the Alfred Robert Nolan Jr. Credit Shelter Trust. And Dorothy Rush Nolan, yeah, but I probably got offline here. North Living Trust, a number of trustees having to do with the property at 4600 Property Road Northeast that we desire for the operation of the Marion County Justice Court. Bruce Armstrong, John Latimer's been here all day for this issue. I don't know who to start with. Or Judge Zeranov, whoever.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, fortunately I was allowed to use a computer in the assessor's office, so I got some, some work done. This is a lease agreement for, a 10-year lease agreement for the Justice Court. And it's on Portland Road in the Hayesville Business Center. This is a facility that is about the same size as the one we talked about before. And it's a couple of blocks away from the other one. It's closer to I-5 as a matter of fact. And we've worked with Terry Fronmeyer and, who helped us find this and work with the tenants, or the landlords, we're the tenants. And we also did a lot of work with Ken Sherman, who's the attorney for the landlord. And the lease has been approved by him and by our legal counsel. The lease amount is $5,822 a month for the, I'm sorry, that's the square footage. What is it? Anyway, the old, the, the lease amounts for the other court facilities that we are moving out of costs us $106,000 a year. So this is a substantial savings. If you have technical questions about the lease, Jan Zirinoff and Bruce Armstrong are here to answer those. Bruce worked with Ken Sherman to work out the details of the lease.
I'm going to butt ahead, John, if I could. I just don't, I don't know where this is exactly and it doesn't really have a map. I know Portland Road, I can about figure it out. But I'm also interested in just, just some discussion of access and parking.
This, this facility has better parking than the other one we looked at. The reason. The reason we couldn't get the other places, because they, they have, the landlords really lived out of state, and they were having a great deal of trouble figuring out whether they wanted to lease it to us. And we were running out of time, because we have to get tenant improvements put in. And so that's why we asked Terry to help us find another location, and she did.
All right, other questions or comments?
I have a few.
I'll start here.
You want to go first, Jan? Thank you. So, it was, it says it's 5822 a month for year one with an escalator, right?
It's 5822 square feet.
Yeah, it's 58, it says right here on page two.
I believe it's a dollar a square foot, so it's.
That's right.
Okay, so 5822 a month.
Yeah.
So is that, what do they call that, a burden rate, a loaded rate? Does it include janitorial and all of that? What does it include?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair Commissioner Carlson, Bruce Armstrong, Assistant Legal Counsel. There are separate provisions relating to maintenance, and we are, county is responsible for janitorial and maintenance of the internal premises. The landlord is responsible for all the structural upkeep, the building systems and things like that. But this, maintenance would be our responsibility.
And how does this really compare to what we were thinking about when we were doing the Portland Road, the other Portland Road facility? Is it close?
I think it's fairly close, isn't it, Jan?
Yes, it is. I believe it was 89 cents a square foot for the Portland, Portland, the other Portland Road property, and this one is a dollar. So it's close, but the other one was a little less.
And then in terms of tenant improvements, we, the other one we talked about, there were all sorts of tenant improvements that were planned. Is it the same level of tenant improvements that will be required? And security and all of that?
Yes, we are trying to do something very similar to what we had for the other square footage. In this particular case, there is an existing structure inside the building, where in the previous building, it was completely gutted, it was just an open shell. So in this particular location, we are going to have to tear down some of the interiors. They, it's a maze, it's a bunch of little small rooms. Those are going to have to be torn down in order for us then to rebuild to what we need. There are some walls and some bathroom facilities that we are going to be able to reuse, but not very men. The bathroom facilities, definitely, we can reuse, and we're going to have to add some new ones. Most of the walls, however, are going to have to go.
Okay, and the court security is going to be similar to what we talked about before?
I, we're trying to do the best we can. The court security is about the most expensive part of the operation, and there's been some discussion about maybe doing some steps in the court security now, and then building, the building facility such that we can then take some more steps in years to come to improve the court facility. So we're building kind of a step structure into it, so that it's not so expensive from the beginning. But everything that we had wanted to put in the original building is designed to go in this building, but may not be able to be all put in at, in one step.
And then the bathrooms in the other facility, if I recall, there was an ADA issue with those. Is that still an issue in these, in this facility?
Yes, because of the size of the courtroom itself, I understand from the architect that we do have to have two ADA bathrooms. Those would have had to have been put in, in the old facility, and they are also needing to be put into the new facility. The existing bathrooms that are there are going to end up being staff bathrooms. They're small and they're in the back, and I don't believe they're ADA accessible. But the ones for the general public, we're going to have to build, just as we would have for the other facility.
I don't think I have any more questions.
I might be incorrect, but it doesn't matter that they're only for staff, they need to be ADA regardless, if, I believe. So, but my question is, so what's all this going to cost? It sounds like you've had some conversations with an architect, what are we looking at?
I don't know that we've come up with an actual cost for the interior improvements. I missed a meeting yesterday between Marion County's architect and the architect for the landlord. And I think they need to finalize the actual design, and then they're going to send it out to bid. So the design hasn't been completed, and therefore the bids have not come in on that. In the other design, we did get that out to bid, and so we had figures at that point, but we don't have figures yet for the interior construction.
And the money's going to come from where?
It's in our budget.
Where's it coming from, though?
General fund.
And how much is in the budget for this?
Oh, boy, it's, we've got, I think we've got about $248,000. I'm not sure of the exact amount of that number, I know it's over $200,000. The, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Milne, the landlord is going to do the tenant improvements, and he's working with his own contractor to do the tenant improvements. We have not received yet a bid on what that's going to cost.
Might I add that there is going to be some money that the landlord is putting towards this project as well, and I believe that was $80,000. John, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
It's $88,000.
All right, anything else? I have a couple comments, then. I've been wanting to move this ahead, I do not want to get caught short. Taking it that will be able to be in effect by July 1st is the key date that we'll be in operation there.
Mr. Chair, the lease agreement requires that it be done by June 1st.
All right.
So, we're, we hope that that will put them, one of the reasons we've been pushing so hard on this is so we can get the tenant improvements done before the end of June. And hopefully, by having that June 1st deadline, that we'll be in by the 1st of July.
And then, second comment, it's just me, I'm not going to hold this up for the ADA requirements or the security, but especially the security was of great importance to me, so I hope we'll have some further discussions in making sure what's, I don't know what's being left out and what's being not, but even on day one, I want it, I don't want to be criticized for trying to operate out of something that isn't secure for all of us.
No, Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're not going to leave out anything substantial that the sheriff's office thinks is necessary. We're trying to figure out if there, some of the security requirements are very expensive, such as bulletproof glass, for example, and a drawer that they can put documents through. But we think that's probably necessary to protect the staff. The, we'll fix the judge's bench, will be secure too. The question we're having right now is the cost of a metal detector, they're very expensive. Then you have to have staff to operate them, so that's something we're going to be working on, whether we can find a better way to do that. The cameras are also another part of this that we'll be working on.
All right, any other discussion? Go ahead.
If I could, it would be useful, I think, for us to get a briefing on this, because even though it was a highly controversial issue, I think we're kind of past the controversy and need to now talk about the implementation. And I'd like to see budget numbers again and kind of understand where we're at, and I'm pretty sure the rest of the board would like that too, so.
Well, these are the comments that I was going to make. I could, I was not happy yesterday. Chair Brantano knew that. I'm reading through my book to make sure I was fully informed, so, for today, and there was absolutely nothing, not one thing, in our book about this, nothing. We talk about transparency, and the importance of this issue. And put aside how we got to moving forward on this, that's behind us. And I made it really clear, I had a very strong difference of opinion as to how the, we would move forward with justice courts. I made it really, really clear that I would very much be supportive of the judge, of the district attorney, the sheriff, and as we go forward, because the decision was made, and we need to do it right, and we need to do it to the best of our ability. Security is important, and getting all these things accomplished, and I know there's a short timeline because of other decisions that were made. It would have been really, really nice if somebody, somewhere, would have said to me, after it was disclosed that the other Portland Road facility wasn't going to work, that, gee, we have our eyes on another facility, and Judge, I know you mentioned it at the department head elected official, that another site was being looked at. I thought, wow, somebody's going to call me and say, or we might have a meeting about it, we might be able to go over details, we might be able to talk about what it costs, we might be able to verify that we have a budget for all of the improvements that need to be made. We might discuss how it's going to happen and some of these things. 10-year, 10-year lease, we haven't had a discussion on, is that a good timeframe? This is not, not the way to address these issues that are so important, and I'm tremendously disappointed. I will not be voting for this. I would, I haven't had a chance to, all I've looked at is Page 1 and 2, sitting here while there was, there were some changes. I don't know anything about this, and nobody, nobody bothered to say, gee Patty, let me fill you in. This will be coming before the board.
All right. And what do we want to do with it?
Let me ask, so why 10 years? Let's put that up.
Well, it's, we're probably going to be there 30. The 10-year lease gets us a better lease rate. The 10-year lease keeps us in one place for a long period of time. And if we're going to put the money into this place, and we're going to settle on a place for the justice court, we need some surety that it's going to be there for a while.
Can I ask one more question? So the next, page 10, there's a big, in my book anyway, a big X through it, and then a replacement page 10, besides Jeff White's name not being on it anymore, did anything change on that page?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Carlson, no. The only change, that was a late change, was to pull Jeff White's individual email and use the financial services email. I should, given the opportunity, what the, there's the 10-year term. I should add that there are also two optional renewal periods that are at county's option. So if it is at our discretion, that if we wanted the period of time to continue, at the end of the 10 years, we have first one option, and a five-year renewal, and then another one five years after that.
Okay, and I've got one more question. So besides the fact that John waited here for three hours to be here to talk about this, and the fact that we need to get this going, so you can do the tenant improvements, if we waited a week to improve this, I mean, to approve it, does that set us, how much does that set us back? By the way, we have a chance to read the documents that actually.
The, that's a, that's a decision point. The tenant improvement section speaks about the timeframe that starts the clock running, where we develop our space plan, we present it to the landlord, and then their landlord and tenant, or county, have 10 days to approve that, and then it goes to the landlord's contractor to provide a bid within 10 days, and then we have 10 days to landlord and tenant, again, the county, to approve that bid. So there you have a stretch of time for that process to be run through. We included a language to allow for, if we don't agree on that bid, to go through that process again. But as you can see, if you, I'm not answering your question, but.
You're not answering my question. So my, so my question is, you all that have talked to the, to Terry and the landlord and negotiated it, was the expectation that we would approve it today, and they're feeling already tight about it? If we waited a week, would they say, oh, no big deal, or, oh, my gosh, the board is, you know, now we can't do it by June the 1st? I mean, I get that there's all these things within it, but that, I don't have a calendar in front of me to back all that up and to know, so just from your discussions, I just need to know what that would do.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Carlson, I, we've been under the gun to get this moved along for quite a while. Terry's been pushing me, and the landlord's been pushing me, and I don't know whether they can get the tenant improvements done in time if we wait too long. That's the issue right now, is they can't start until we get a, an agreement from the board. If you want to wait till next week, I'm sure.
How long have you been having discussions with these individuals?
When did we start?
It would be a month. I recall that it was on President's Day, or on the holiday in January, Martin Luther King Day, that you reached a verbal agreement with the, with the landlord. And then it's taken a month to get that reduced to writing.
So a month, well, Martin Luther King Day, you had a verbal agreement, and I have not heard one word about this? And we get a 10-year lease in front of us this morning to make a decision for a 30-year agreement?
It's not a 30-year agreement, it's.
Well, you want a 30, we're going to be there 30 years, and 10 years, and under the gun.
I'm speculating, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I'm speculating, we'll be there 30 years, I won't be here 30 years, believe you.
Well, that's, that's not the issue at hand, but we, had we had a discussion even before you made a verbal agreement, this probably would be an entirely different discussion at the moment.
All right, where do we want to go?
All right, well, I understand that we're under the gun for this. I can appreciate, I can appreciate, John, you were out ill, you had surgery, there were, there have been other pressing things. It seems like this kind of fell through the cracks. I heard about it also at the department head meeting, and I think, Jan, you were in the office one day, and I was at the copy machine and asked you how it was going, and you mentioned that you were in a different place, and that was the first time I knew that we were in a different place. So, could have been communicated more. I'd still like to have, even though we're moving forward, I'd like to see, kind of take our original budget numbers and see how this lines up with it, and kind of understand where we're at, so if we could schedule that for a time in the near future, that would be much appreciated. But I will reluctantly move that we approve this 10-year lease agreement with all of the various parties that are listed for everyone's viewing pleasure at 4660 Portland Road Northeast for the operation of the Marion County Justice Court.
Is there a second? I think I've heard, no. I'll second that. I, I understand that I like to lot, know a lot more typically when I make an action like this, but I also understand, I and we need this to be ready to go. So, I hope we're right, and I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Again, this, this is just, has been horribly, horribly handled, and there are no excuses for this kind of an investment, when we've all known that there's a time period, and that there's not been one word said going back to January, that, that's just unacceptable. Now, I do expect, going forward, that we will be talking about this, and the minute there is something that needs to be discussed, that I am going to know about it.
All right, anything else? Call a question, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion passes two to one. Our last item this morning is under health. Consider approval of an annual update of the Public Health Services Plan. Rod Cawkins, Pam Hutchinson, and you can tell, you probably want to come forward right about now.
They are so ready.
Good, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, not often I get to say.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, not often I get to say that at a board meeting. Thank goodness. It's been a long one. I'm Rod Cawkins, the Marion County Health Administrator. We're here to speak with you today in your role as the local public health authority about the annual renewal of the public health plan. The public health plan is one of our requirements for receiving funding from the state Public Health Division for Public Health Services, and it allows us to improve and promote the health of individuals in our community. With me to take any questions, we did talk about this at management update back on the tenth, I believe it was, uh, the Monday before this one, because this Monday was a holiday, and solicited questions at that time, but certainly would take any other ones. Pam?
Are there any questions right up, or?
Yeah, well, let me just ask. I realized we're really late here, and, and we did talk about it at management update. I was snowed in that day, but maybe, Pam, could you just hit, what, I mean, because, as I understand it, other than the organization of it, where it's in four pieces rather than in one piece, which we've been used to seeing it, and you were saying this is an update, and there really aren't a lot of substantial changes to it, could you just give us the examples of two or three changes that you've made to it, or kind of hit a couple highlights, so people that may still be hanging in with us, if anyone knows what it is that we're approving on this health plan?
Okay, it's, um, first of all, the state recognizing that there's a movement towards public health accreditation across the nation, and accreditation requires that you have a community health assessment and a strategic plan, and the state suggested that everybody post all those pieces individually on the state website, as well as, we put it on our own website for access, you know, local access. But in the past, we'd always bound it together into one document, so now it is separated, and this update is, has very minor changes. It's mostly explaining about the reason that things are broken up. Also, in the health assessment section, there's a summary of healthcare access assessment that the health department did in collaboration with Polk County Health Department and the local CCO, Willamette Valley Community Health. And so that looks at something, issues around health access, you know, to the, mainly to the OHP population, but also looking at the general community, and some of the findings that we found would not really be surprising. It's that geography is creating some barriers for people. There's less diversity, less availability of services out in the more remote areas of the county, and that transportation is another issue, not only rural, but also in Salem with not having bus services that run seven days a week for expanded hours. So that was one of the most significant additions to the, otherwise it was just updates to the various quality improvement activities that we're working on at the health department.
And if I could ask a second question. So you, we highlighted in our State of the County, this community health improvement project, this lovely colorful document that I think is available on your website also, and that as we go around the county, we'll have different pages of that for people to see. So could you just give us a nickel version about how that came about and how that relates? I mean, is it, are the findings of that incorporated into this plan?
The, the Community Health Improvement Partnership is, it involves the whole county. We've got four regional work groups that are, have been working on different initiatives to mainly prevent adult obesity and, you know, family, family healthy activity, family healthy foods. And so we have different work groups in all parts of the county, and everybody came together in their regions in two thousand and eleven to identify what were the priority issues. And the ten key indicators that we looked at at that time are included in the health assessment. So one of them, of course, is obesity, but there's other things in there that might be of interest to the public. And we summarize it all in the booklet. We got a grant from the Northwest Health Foundation to hold the events, the kickoff events, we called them, where we could provide food and print out these booklets then later after we finish the process. And so we still have booklets available if anybody was interested in a copy, but they are available on the website, and there you could print out a page if you were interested.
Yeah, we put them on the tables at State of the County so people could see them. And I guess, if I could, my last question would be, or just a comment, actually. So when we talked about this at management update, I commented on the fact that the Commissioners participated in an interview during accreditation with a team of people from around the nation, and it was very interesting. One of the things that I recall not having a great answer to, as they asked the question, was, so in your planning process, other than the Commissioners receiving and approving it like we're doing here today, are you actually involved or engaged in the development of the plan? And, and they, you know, it was kind of not really, and, and so, and talking to Rod on that, he said that that was something that, that the health department is interested in, creating a process in the future where Commissioners can be more engaged. Perhaps we participate in some community forums, or as you're updating the community assessments, that we can hear some of the things. Maybe we could actually hold a forum here or something to, to gather community input. So I just wanted to put that on the record here, since we're officially approving it rather than just talking about it, and I know that you're open to that, and, and we could work together on that.
All right, anything else? And if not, I know.
All right, you know, but let--
I was going to ask, but I--
Let me comment. I do want to thank you, Pam and Rod, for coming, and, and the brochures and all that you have, they're great. They really are good resources for the community, and of course, I can't help but to look at the report here from my own community, and, and a few years ago, when this new approach, I think that's okay to call it that, began, and really talking with community members about their perceptions, and also acknowledging what is available, whether it's walking or, or some, or getting immunizations. There is a lot going on from community to community to help promote everyone's health and the overall community health, and that's a good thing. So I do, do want to acknowledge that in here, and we're all trying to figure out how healthcare is evolving and transforming, and, and so I, I'm very appreciated, appreciative of, of this aspect of it. But yes, Mr. Chair, I'm going to have to, because this is our funding that, that happens, and it's, with all due respect to all the great programs that, that the health department does put on, I am still very concerned about the relationship here of our young children and the access to, to products and care without parental involvement, parental approval, parental consent, and I know that's the law, and that's what we live under, but it just goes against my, my personal beliefs and convictions that when, when our government is put in a place of higher authority with the family, and especially with parents making decisions for their children, I, that's just not right. So I'm, I'm going to be voting no on, on this, as I always have, but thank you for your work on these other areas. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the annual update of the Public Health Services Plan.
Second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Well, the last we have to do this morning is to notice those places we'll be together in the next week, tomorrow morning, on the twentieth of February, eight o'clock to nine, City of Salem, Marion County meeting. I should learn how to spell this or say this. Alseon, I believe, Cafe, Pringle Plaza, three fifteen, High Street Northeast. Does that sound right? Alseon?
Sounds good.
Very good. Management update on the twenty-fourth Monday in the Columbia and San Diem Conference Rooms, four fifty-one Division Street on the second floor, starting at nine o'clock. Same day Monday, eleven to twelve, Board of Commissioners, Chief Administrative Officer Executive Session, if needed pursuant to ORS one nine two six six oh two ABF and I, Columbia River Conference Room. Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, eight thirty to ten, Community Corrections Board, Columbia and San Diem River Conference Room. That'll be followed at ten thirty by a one-on-one Department Head Elected Officials meeting with Tammy Getch from Community Services. Next Wednesday is our next board meeting here in the Commissioners' Board Room, and we still have a couple more that afternoon. There'll be a one-on-one Department Head Elected Officials meeting with the District Attorney Walt Beglaw at two thirty, and then at three forty-five, same location, Columbia River Conference Room, meeting with Legal Counsel Gloria Roy. I usually ask for whatever else you want to talk about. I think we've gone on long enough. I want to, I kind of, it isn't like we put in a thousand hours, but it's longer than our normal, and the stress is a little higher. I always want to thank those that do help make the meetings go, and we never really recognize them, people, Marcus Groo, CCTV. Kim sits here and quietly takes all the notes, Kim Hewitt does a great job, and Gloria always supports us well. I just wanted to say that once so I never forget it.
And I will say that the mayor, Anna Peterson, is probably just wrapping up her State of the City address right now, which I had been planning to go over to see.
So we excuse her, no?
But I hope it went well, and I will read about it in the Statesman Journal.
All right, anything else this now afternoon?
No, we, we can, we can go with, what, a minute before one o'clock? It's not a record, though, is it?
I thought it would be one of these wellness things--
No, it was the sensitive groundwater overlay was three oh five, I think, although we start, we might have started an hour later at that point, but still--
Groundwater, you'll never be groundwater for a long day. All right, anything else this morning, afternoon?
Yeah.
All right, then thank you all. We'll call this meeting adjourned.